Okay, so we're gonna start the Select Board meeting of November 5th. It being 8:31 pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Carver Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access proceedings as provided for in the order. If despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide real-time access due to technical difficulties, a recording or other comprehensive record of proceedings of the meeting will be made available online as soon as possible. So this meeting is being recorded by Area 58 Community Access Media. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the Select Board page on our website for a listing and application. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I don't know if we're gonna get a flag, but that's fine.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
And to the Republic and to which it stands.
One nation, one nation, under God.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would someone like to lead the community prayer? Okay, that's better. Would someone like to lead the community prayer?
All right, it.
Thank you.
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility, and especially we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and hearts.
Amen. Amen. Thank you. It's now time for citizen participation. Do we have anyone here who is interested in participating as a citizen?
There are a couple of participants in the waiting room. I don't know if you noticed them at all, Sarah.
I see them. Who is Scott? Anyone know? I know Dylan. I know Tito Fleetwood-Lad is here for the public hearing. Scott or Adam, are either of you here for citizens' participation? Okay, I guess not. Now, it being 8:35, it's time for our public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Carver Select Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, November 5th, 2020, at 8:35 a.m. at the Carver Town Hall, 108 Main Street Carver, on the application of Carver Convenience, Inc., DBA Quickie for change of manager, change of officers/directors/LLC managers, and insurance transfer of stock and new stockholder located at 60 North Main Street. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. I'll let Tito in. Just for the record, the town administrator and the assistant town administrator have set up a computer at Town Hall, since when we published this ad, we didn't know we were going to be on Zoom. So if anyone from the public did show up at Town Hall this morning, they will have access to this public hearing. Mr. Lad, are you here for this public hearing?
I am.
I'm sorry.
Please state your name and tell us what you want us to know.
Sarah, could I point out that the board's probably aware that you've actually already voted this? There was a technicality with Elaine having submitted the public hearing notice on time to the enterprise, and for whatever reason, it was not published in a timely manner. I'm not pointing fingers, but that's basically why we're doing this again. The board has actually already voted this.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to approve the change of officers, directors, LLC managers, and insurance transfer of stock slash new stockholder.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Madam Chair, I believe remembering back to previous Zoom meetings for Zoom calls, we have to take roll calls on every vote.
Right. Thank you, Mark. And actually, before we close the hearing, I want to ask if there's anyone in the public that wishes to speak on this issue, because it is a public hearing. Okay, hearing none. Let's take a roll call vote. Mr. Belbin?
I.
Mrs. Bogart?
Jen Bogart says aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Mr. Townsend says aye.
Eric Hearn also says aye. The application, the license has been approved. Okay, host community agreement, discussion, possible vote to approve the host community agreement with Cape Way Cannabis. Lefan, you gave us a great supplemental material on this. Could you just give a brief summary for the public?
Sure. The host community agreement is somewhat of a boilerplate agreement between a licensing authority, in this case, the Select Board, and an applicant. This particular project proposal had already been submitted to the planning board, which realistically, the host community agreement needs to come first. They do have a public hearing set up in December, so the planning, the technical review team will be meeting with the proponent next week. The consideration here is the 3% that's required by law, well, that's allowed by law, and a charitable contribution to the town of $35,000. That's the kind of the current going rate, so to speak. Basically, once this is approved by the board, then it goes through the full hearing process with the planning board. At that time, they will discuss with the applicant such things as public safety, traffic mitigation, and all those things that go into the conditions of the site and the operation. That is not what the Select Board does. That's done through the permitting process with the planning board. Attorney Amy Questle with KP Law, my understanding is, joining us in the Zoom meeting, to the extent that the board members wish to have any questions of her, seeing where she's the one who has reviewed the host community agreement and agrees that it is in proper form. That being said, the only items that are really within the realm of the Select Board are the financial considerations. The rest of it is the planning board. They're under their jurisdiction. So I don't know if anybody has questions for me or for Amy.
Madam Chair?
I'm sorry. I do know that Mr. Bell, yes.
Well, just a quick question. I know you noticed on your cover page you sent to us, but just for the public's, the 3% is the maximum allowed by law, correct?
That is correct, yes.
3% fee, okay. I just wanted to point that out, that's all.
And Mr. Belbin did have an additional request of $5,000. And Bob, you want to raise that issue right now?
I actually have a couple, actually, here. Going through the agreement, I've looked at other agreements for other towns, and I, one sparked my attention in Kingston, where they look for a one-time payment of $100,000 within 60 days of the sales commencement date. Well, I look at that as kind of a sign-on bonus to us to sign this contract with them. I'm not asking for $100,000. I think that a sign-on bonus of $75,000 for our town could be in order for that. Also...
Bob, Bob, can I interrupt only because I just got an email from our local correspondent, Catherine, asking if she can be let into the meeting, and I don't know if that's something Sarah needs to do?
Yeah, I can let everybody in.
Okay.
Except, oh, I see her. I see her. Yeah, I got her.
Okay. All right. Very good.
So Sarah, anybody that comes into the meeting, if they can just mute their voice, that way we're not listening to them.
They are, Mr. Belbin. They're all muted.
Excellent. Thank you. So what I had just said was that, looking over a number of different host agreements through different towns, the town of Kingston looks at a one-time payment of $100,000, and it looked like that'd be kind of a sign-on bonus to sign on the dotted line. That's just my opinion. So I wouldn't look for $100,000. I was thinking about closer to $75,000, $450,000, whatever it is that gets negotiated. The other thing is, on the term, it says five years. I'd like to rather have a three-year contract. That way we can review it after three years, and then if there's something that needs to be adjusted here or there, depending on their sales or whatnot, they have an issue, we catch it earlier than later. Just my thought process on that for the term. The other thing is, I'd like to see a $5,000 go to Cable Access Channel on educational material that's being on that cable channel for residents. Would it include possible healthcare issues for people, if they have any dependency issues, something like that? So that's pretty much my financial end of it. I guess some more people want to discuss that first.
Sarah, I would ask that you recognize Amy Questle at KP Law regarding what Bob has already, has just raised for some of her input.
Yes, thank you. I was just ready to do that. Attorney Questle, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So one of the things that's important to note is that the way that the host community agreement is written now is a $35,000 annual. So over five years, that would be more than the one-time payment. It's unusual now to have the one-time plus a substantial annual plus charitable. So right now, the way that they have it is $35,000 a year for one time. The $5,000 for the charitable donation or to go to Cable Access, I think, is a great idea. I think we should add that in. And then with regard to the three-year, that's very interesting, Mr. Belbin, because I haven't seen that. The reason why I think, so statutorily, the host community agreement can only be five years. It cannot be longer. So we do have a renegotiation after four years, so we have a year to renegotiate. One of the reasons why I think that the five-year would be beneficial is because the payments are guaranteed for five years. So with a three-year, we're not necessarily guaranteed. You know, we're only guaranteed for the three years. Now, one of the other things is that there's a reopener. We can do a reopener clause where if they enter into, or somebody else enters into a host community agreement with more beneficial terms, then this host community agreement automatically has to have those terms. So you know, that might, that might, that might take care of any concerns you have for the three-year versus the five-year. But I don't see a legal impediment to three years, because the statute, and I'll have to go back and check the regulations, because this is obvious, this has never come up before, but the statute says maximum of five years. So I would just have to, I would just have to check that. But there are, there's a few benefits on the other side to have it for five years, in my opinion.
I understand that. There is a benefit to the five years. Issue here is, if Carver had gotten involved in this at the beginning and the onset of this, all right, of the whole recreational marijuana or medicinal marijuana, we would have been in a better position to do a five-year and, okay, fine. But now that there's already competition in Wareham and Plymouth and other towns, that someone coming into Carver, they may have a difficulty of marketing the product, okay, for a certain amount of money or whatnot, and they may not make as much as what they thought they would the first couple of years. So opening it up with three years, we can find out, how's the business going? Where are we at financially-wise? Is it better that we go ahead instead of doing the reopener? Because of reopening, you have to have both parties agree to the reopener. All right, we do a three-year, we go forward, okay. After two years, bring them in, talk to them, how things going, what's going on, and then if we say, all right, you want to go for an extension for two years, no problem, we'll do an extension for two years, we'll renegotiate for five years for term there. But I know this is different than what other places are doing, but I think because we're on the middle end of the recreational marijuana for a business, I think we should look at that as, let's see where we're at. So that's why I want to go for the three-year instead. And I've already looked, sorry, I've already looked at it, and I've looked at the Cannabis Control Commission of what their regulations are and everything. It does say up to five years. You can't do more than five years. It doesn't say anything about doing it for three years.
Right. And then the other thing is that the company would have to agree to a three-year, which, again, I don't know, I don't know if they would simply because if their financial backers will agree to a three-year rather than a five-year. And so it would have to be agreed upon, I think, obviously. It's a contract. It's a contract between two parties. So yeah, you would have to agree.
Could I just, Sarah raised the, you know, to Bob's point, I don't, I think it's incumbent upon the proponent to come to the town if they would wish to renegotiate because of their own, we'll say, the financial benefit to them from running this business isn't what they had hoped, and they would be seeking to reduce the amount to the town. I think it's, you know, I don't think that it's something that we need to be involved in, their, you know, their marketing strategy and where they see their market. I think that's their business as a private entity, and if they're not meeting whatever their financial goals or target is, I think, I think it's up for them to come to us, not for us to review how their business is doing. So again, that's my opinion, and to the extent that this five years has been proposed, something by the proponent, and they are willing to guarantee $35,000 a year, that's the top end now of the so-called going rate financially. And like I said, if they can't keep up that end of the, if they have trouble doing that, then they can come to the board at any time and seek to renegotiate.
Thank you.
That's my opinion on it.
Just to go.
Although I do agree with Bob, I think to the extent that we can get a little bit more for the purposes of Area 58 for educational purposes, I have little doubt that the proponent would agree to that at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
And if the board wanted to make, take a vote contingent upon that, I'm sure they would be there. I would be very surprised if they were not amenable to that, if that's part of what the board wished to vote today.
Thank you, Mr. Lefan. Mr. Townsend?
I was just gonna comment. I agree with Bob on several of the points he made where we should try to get some additional fees or help from the company. But it would just seem to me, at this point, if the $35,000 is the top of the market right now, and we can lock that in for five years, it's probably worth us trying to lock it in for the five years, because as more and more of these shops open, I have to think that those numbers are gonna go down a little bit. And I don't know. So it just seems to me, if we can lock those numbers in for five years instead of three, that might be to our advantage to do that.
Okay. What I'm gonna do now is, Mr. Belbin, were you making a motion to amend this agreement?
I wanted, I had a couple more questions for the attorney.
Okay. Please.
All right. Under C, annual charitable contributions, it says local charities and nonprofit organizations in the town. All right. So I want to make sure that the $5,000 that I'm requesting is over and above that 35. Okay. So that would be my motion, that we go ahead and make the motion that we approve $5,000 dedicated directly to Area 58 for educational and other activities related to the cannabis industry.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Any more discussion?
Not on Bob's point.
Mrs. Bogart?
Well, it's not on Bob's point. So if we're voting on Bob's amendment, then no, but on just the overall agreement, then yes.
Sarah, can I just point out once again, as Amy stated, the $35,000, locking that in is a benefit, but there's also, as she mentioned, a reopener, to the extent that there's any better deals, almost like a collective bargaining agreement, to the extent that any contract is reopened if another group does better, so to speak. But this would guarantee that if any other contract is more beneficial, that Carver automatically gets that. So $35,000 is the top of the market right now, but should that grow, Carver would be eligible for that, too. So I think the agreement pretty much covers a lot of the concerns. And I do think, and again, I don't want to take up the whole time here. I know Jen wishes to speak, but I think at some point for Amy, the question would be in terms of what the CCC is willing to approve, you know, if there's, I think there's some general parameters and philosophy on their part. So I would ask that you, before this issue is over with, that maybe you ask Amy that question. But now I'll be quiet and let you recognize the other board members.
That's all right. Thank you, Mr. Lefan. Mrs. Bogart, and then I would like to hear from Attorney Questle.
Okay. Well, just for starters, on page one in the second paragraph, it says it's Cape Way Cannabis. So the business name is wrong on the agreement?
That's correct. That's actually a typo by them, just so you know.
I just, I would never want to sign or have us sign something that's incorrect. Then at the end of that paragraph, it says the Board of Selectmen, but we are the Select Board. I don't remember if it comes up more than once, but I think this needs to be gone through more with a fine-tooth comb. But my overall point is that I appreciate that Bob had looked into other towns, and since we just got this on Tuesday, I haven't had the time to compare it to other towns. And while I don't doubt that the $35,000 is the top of what other towns are getting, I do wonder if there are other clauses in there that are different. So I would ask the rest of the board to just not let us vote on this until next time, and I will volunteer to do research on my own of other towns. And if I find any other clauses that are different or interesting, I would email Rick, and then Rick could send them out to you guys. But I just haven't had the time to compare this to other towns. And I like that Bob did, because this is a big deal. It's the first one in town. I want to make sure we do it right. So, and since they're not having their hearing with Planning Board, I don't think it's unreasonable to put it off to our next meeting, the vote.
Attorney Questle, could we hear from you on these various points?
Sure. So one of the things is that if there was going to be a vote today, I would suggest that the vote be simply on the terms of the agreement, because Ms. Bogart is correct that this has not been gone through to correct typos and, you know, and things, and then we have to put in, you know, any amendments that are made today on the terms of the actual agreement. So it definitely does need to be gone through with a fine-tooth comb. With regard to whether you agree on financial terms today or not, you know, again, that is, that's a policy decision by this board. I will say that, in my experience, these terms are, these terms are beneficial. When we started with marijuana, there was, the terms were better. And with any business, as you know, with any business, the market becomes a little bit more saturated, and therefore, you know, some terms are reduced. We've also had some backlash from the CCC and from the public with regard to municipalities' so-called demands in these host community agreements. However, I will say that this is a contract between two parties. This is a contract between the town and the company. And so in no way, in my opinion, in no way, has any company been, you know, forced or coerced into anything. So they've agreed upon these terms. The Cannabis Control Commission does not necessarily have approval over the, over the host community agreement. They have to ensure that the host community agreement simply just meets certain parameters, and those parameters are that the amount, the community impact fee does not go over 3%, that the term of the agreement is not over five years, that any local permit that is required, that the host community agreement has to require that the special permit is granted. So again, that we have to, there can be no waiver of CCC regulations such as distance to schools, things like that. They don't necessarily get into all of the terms of the agreement. This agreement, in my opinion, meets the, right now, meets the Cannabis Control Commission parameters that they would look for.
And Sarah, if I could point out that Attorney Greg Corbo is, has not been let into the meeting yet, from what I understand?
I didn't mean.
Okay, okay.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. I'm here now.
Okay. Well, there is a motion and a second on the floor to approve the $5,000 to Area 58 for its educational programming. Unless that is withdrawn, I will entertain that vote. All in favor?
Robert Belbin says aye.
Mr. Townsend says aye.
Mrs. Bogart?
Are we voting on the amendment or the whole agreement?
The amendment.
Okay. Jen Bogart says aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Eric Hearn says aye. Okay. So we've approved that.
I have a couple of questions now, also on the, it says that it goes to local charities and nonprofit organizations in the town of $35,000. So it says the check goes to the town of Carver, correct? That $35,000, and do we disperse it to local charities, or is that just for us?
That would be, what's this, I'm sorry, go ahead, Amy. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. You would disperse, the money comes into the town, you would disperse it?
And then we disperse it out to the local charities?
Yes.
Yes.
And if we don't use the money, does it go back to the company, or do we keep it for the town of Carver?
No, it has, this provision requires that it goes to charities.
Okay. How will, who will be in charge of this money to be distributed?
The Select Board.
Okay.
Through, and you could name a designee.
I like this, I like the Select Board.
And so the other thing that, some of the other things that we have run into in this paragraph, is that we have, there are charities that, I guess, the discussion has been, what is the term of local charities? And so, so in some towns, it's been a regional, you know, a regional charitable foundation. It doesn't have to actually be located in Carver.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That was one of my other questions, but thank you. I appreciate it. My next one is on the D for a question. They're supposed to submit their financial statement to the town within 30 days. It says the town, I'd like to see the Board of Selectmen have a copy of that added, that it goes not just to the town, but also to the Board of Selectmen, so we can keep track of what's going on and how added, that it goes not just to the town, but also to the Board of Selectmen, so we can keep track of what's going on and how things are going. Next one on number three, the local bend is, I just want to let residents to know is they're supposed to in good faith hire Carver residents, which is great for Carver, to try to keep Carver residents and Carver businesses local, so I just want to know that that's a great thing, and I think that was my last comment. So, thank you.
All right, is there a motion to approve this agreement?
I just had a quick question.
Mr. Hoffman?
On the, just going back to the annual charitable contribution, where in the middle, all over a portion of the charitable contribution, excess of 35,000 will be gifted to the town Board of Selectmen to assist the efforts to offset costs related to environmental and/or conservation issues. So, it's not 100% of the $35,000 goes to charity? If I read that correctly, then, I should say charitable contribution. So some of it actually go to environmental or conservation issues?
Ms. Questle?
Yes, and so that would be, that's essentially, I'm just trying to find the sentence, I'm sorry.
Right in the middle of them.
Oh, I see it, okay, sorry. So that's if there's any, that's actually a term that's more for a cultivation facility regarding if there's any, if there's an increase of water or any kind of usage like that, which really doesn't apply to a retail facility. But essentially, that gives you, it gives us a bit more opportunity as to where the money goes, it doesn't have to necessarily go to charities that deal with drug abuse or things like that. So it kind of, it opens up the spectrum a little bit.
Mrs. Bogart?
So then, does that relate to Bob's extra $5,000, since that will be in excess of the 35,000? Do those?
No, so we would change that, this paragraph would have to be changed, and the paragraph would have to say, it would have to say above and beyond the 35,000, so under C, it would change to C1 and C2. So 1 would be the $35,000, and 2 would be the new $5,000. And the $5,000 would be specific to, you know, we would say something like, you know, specific to Area 58 and/or public access TV in case the name changes or something in the next five years, for educational programming.
Amy, can I raise one other question, and this actually goes to Mr. Hoffman's point. Through the annual charitable contribution, it says all proportion of I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I have answered my own question, in excess of $35,000, I'm sorry, okay. My questions are answered, okay. If I also might point out, if the board agrees to the terms, this contract would have to be, you know, put in shape some of the input from the board members, and I would propose that this come back to the next meeting for your ratification and signatures. Once the contract is cleaned up with the provisions the board is requesting.
Thank you, Mr. Bellbin, and then Mr. Hoffman.
Under that contributions, where you say that it's more for agricultural and for it, and we get that spelled out a little clearer about the conservation and whatnot, if it's a grow operation or whatnot, and we get that kind of spelled out, so we actually know exactly that this is what it means?
Okay, I'm sorry, I would just, to the extent that there's more flexibility than less, I think is a good thing, and ultimately, the board has to approve this anyway. So I would just, you know, I appreciate the point, Bob, and maybe, I don't know if there's some definitions, but I I wouldn't want the board to tie its hands either, because keeping in mind, this is over and above $35,000.
Mr. Hoffman?
But that was my question, Rick, what you had just mentioned, said over and above the 35, I guess I'm a little confused, but didn't we say 35 was the max they would contribute? But now this says any or all in excess of the 35 will be gifted to the town for environmental issues, so I guess I'm a little confused on that.
So, Mr. Hoffman, it actually says in an amount no less than $35,000 that they have to donate.
Right, but then in that section about the environmental, it says in excess of 35.
Right, so if they donate more than $35,000, we can use that excess for things other than, we can use it for environmental or conservation.
So up to 35 will be for charitable, anything over 35 could be for environmental.
Yep, correct.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess what, you know, I guess on the other flip side, why would they contribute more than 35?
Knew that question was coming.
Okay, I just, okay, thank you.
Goodwill, goodwill.
And I think part of that, and correct me if I'm wrong, is they do have to go through the public hearing and permitting process with the planning board. So it may very well be that part of what they will be requiring, whatever site mitigation, that would essentially recognize in the host community agreement, any impact fees to the town that may be ultimately required by the planning board, so this, I think, dovetails with the permitting process.
Thank you, Mrs. Bogart.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that Bob had asked who would be in charge of kind of giving the money out to the charities, and I thought that I heard it said that the Select Board would, but this paragraph said that it will be done in its reasonable discretion upon consultation with the town administrator. There's no mention of the Select Board being involved in the distribution except in excess of the 35,000. And I thought that Bob had wanted the Select Board to be involved in that.
And Jen, I would suggest that that simply just be changed to the Select Board, I, you know, not trying to shirk any responsibility, but I think it's probably just as more appropriate to have the Select Board there, Jen, I think that's an easy correction.
I just want to make sure that his point is acted out, so, because I noticed it there.
Very good, Mr. Hoffman?
Yeah, just to add on to what Jen said, so basically, the way it reads that the company will contribute to the public charities on their own, not through the town, well, it says through, with consultation to the town administrator, but they actually make the donation, so it doesn't come to the town, and then we turn over the money? The company would directly contribute it to the charity?
Ms. Questle?
You could do it either way, but the way that Mr. Bellbin requested was that the Board of, the Select Board direct where the money goes to, so it's, I think that it would be easier if the company directed it straight to a charity, but it would only happen after the Select Board directs the company where it goes.
And I think the other point there too is, you know, to what mechanism the town has to distribute that, I know there are prohibitions on the town giving to charitable organizations. So the only time you'll see that, and I think, you know, when there's a petition article at town meeting, that would ultimately be, that wouldn't be illegal, some of the groups, as you know, for instance, Social Community Action Council, at this point, I know you're all aware that there's an amount appropriated that the Finance Committee has jurisdiction over to distribute to some of these groups, but the parameters and the limitations on the town giving to charitable organizations is problematic, so think to the extent that the Select Board approves whatever they propose to provide to charitable organizations is a much more appropriate way to do it, and I'm sure that they would appreciate the tax benefits of doing so also.
Okay, thank you.
So is there a motion to approve this host community agreement with the amendments we proposed?
Can I just ask, are we voting on all the amendments, including the three to five year term?
No, I'm proposing, I'm asking if there's a motion to approve this agreement with the provision under C1, would be 35K and C2 would be the 5K to Area 58 or public access television.
Thank you.
And I would also suggest that the portion that references with consultation with the town administrator, that that be changed to Select Board.
That is changed, as well as the typos in the Select Board on page one, that Bogart pointed out. So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we have that this agreement come back to us at the next meeting for us to see all the changes put in place, and actually read the document to make sure all our i's are dotted, t's are crossed. And I'd like to have the town administrator go back and ask the applicant if they're interested in a three-year agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
If there's been a motion and a second, any further discussion?
So we're going to ask them if they want to have a three-year agreement instead of a five-year agreement? Is that what we're?
That was part of the motion.
That would in no way bind us to a three-year agreement, right, we're just asking for their information, okay.
And can I just make sure that the board is clear on the consideration, the financial parameters in here, so that I think that should be in the form of a vote, so that we know specifically what we're bringing back to you on the 17th. Because the intent would be to have a document that you could approve and hopefully sign at that time, if you are clear on what, if this covers the consideration that the board is concerned with, or?
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that that was what Attorney Questle was pointing out to us, that Section C would be divided into two parts, C1 would specifically denote the 35K as the contribution, and then C2 would be the 5K to Area 58 or public access television. So I think, so that is what we're voting on. Mrs. Bogart?
I appreciate, and I agree with Bob's sentiment that I don't think anything needs to be voted on, before anything is voted on in a final way, we should have a more final-looking document, I mean, I just, this thing is so important that it's very, it's difficult for me to support something that I don't have in front of me as a final document. And as far as the financial terms, like I said before, I'm not disagreeing that these are standard, but I would ask the board to take the extra time, and specifically to give me the extra time to look at other towns, so I can make a fully informed decision. So I would ask that if we come back to another vote, that the board be open to other suggestions or ideas, and not strictly financial ones, because I don't know everything that has gone into these agreements. But I want to do my due diligence as a Select Board member to make sure that that I look at everything, so I'm asking for time to suggest or propose or bring up other changes, especially if we're coming back for a vote. So I would ask that we don't vote on anything specific tonight, and go, or this morning, not tonight, and just come back with like, round two next time, with a clearer document.
So is that a second, Mrs. Bogart, to Bob's motion to have the agreement at our next November 17th meeting?
Yes, yeah, because I think that's how we got to discussion right now. I think it was.
Motion?
If I could just, if I could just interject quickly, I think the guidance, though, that we need, me and Town Council has to do with what we've already talked about to some extent, so you know, we're going to bring a document back to you on the 17th, and you know, it'd be nice to know what you would actually like to see in that, certainly subject to any further requests by the board. I mean, I can certainly take the consensus in some of the suggestions the board has, and update this agreement if you would like, short of a formal vote, but I just wanted to be reasonably clear what you're looking for on the 17th.
Mr. Hoffman?
What I'd like to know, what I'd like to maybe get a vote on is how the board feels on the three versus five year. I agree with kind of what Bob said, but I'd like to lock them in for five years, if they have a problem, like Rick said, they can come back to us and try to renegotiate, but I'd rather work from, you know, getting that commitment and then working backwards versus trying to just get three years, and then hopefully trying to extend them later. So I just want to see what the consensus of the board, I don't want to tie Bob's motion into two separate things, one is the agreement, and then two is changing the length of it. Can we have two separate votes?
Sure.
One just to, do we want to go down to three, or keep it at the five? And then the second on the actual agreement?
We can. But first, we have a motion and a second to have the agreement come back to us on our November 17th meeting with all the appropriate changes made to it. All in favor?
But wasn't that tied into asking them for three years as well?
That's what I thought as well.
Yeah, I withdraw my motion, all right, so we can vote on the three or five years.
Okay.
Thanks, Bob.
So Jen, your motion, Mr. Hoffman, is?
That we, my motion is that we keep it at five years.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Mr. Hoffman?
Jim Hoffman, aye.
Mr. Bellbin?
Bellbin says no.
Mrs. Bogart?
Ms. Bogart says no.
Mr. Townsend?
Mr. Townsend says yes.
And Ms. Hewin says yes.
I didn't hear a question, Rick?
Yes, thank you. Whatever your direction is, it's, you know, it helps for clarity for me, and ultimately for Town Council, so thank you.
So, Madam Chairman, if I may, so are we proposing perhaps that I produce a redline version and a clean version for the 17th? Would that be helpful to the board, so they can see the actual changes that are being made to this document?
It would be extremely helpful, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
So can I make that motion that that Rick go back to applicant with the changes, so that we can have a clean copy for us and a redline copy at our next meeting?
Second motion.
Okay. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to do what Ms. Questle proposed, all in favor?
Robert Bellbin says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Mrs. Bogart?
Jen Bogart has a question, so is this locking us into just these terms, and all we can fix is redline stuff, or are we open to new ideas? Like, are we, I just, are we not able to come back with any new comments next time, if this is approved?
You can come back with new comments, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, then Jen Bogart says aye.
Mr. Townsend?
Mark Townsend says aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, we'll have that redline copy and a clean copy for our next meeting. All right, moving right along. Mr. Corbo is here today to discuss our suggested social media code of conduct. Mr. Corbo, would you like to speak to us first, and then we can go to questions from the board?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, good morning, everyone. I did have an opportunity to take a look at the suggested social media code of conduct, and in looking at the terms generally, I find that they do outline a reasonable code for the behavior of public officials, as well as their supporters on their public media, I'm sorry, on their social media platforms. Before talking about some of the specifics of the policy, you know, I do wish to point out a couple of legal issues that arise in this you know, I do wish to point out a couple of, of legal issues that arise in this particular subject area. So I'll start with the fact that the Attorney General has taken the position that public officials do have the right to post about public business on social media platforms, whether that is platforms hosted by themselves or on platforms hosted by others. And a, a post by one particular member, even if seen by all or a quorum of the other members, does not constitute a violation of the open meeting law. However, there is a caution there and that is that it's very easy on these social media platforms to have an inadvertent violation of the open meeting law. And so while one person posting would not constitute a violation, maybe two people posting, if it's a five-member board, would not constitute a violation. But the moment a third member posts about the same subject, now there's a risk that you will be seen as having had a deliberation outside of a posted meeting. So, you know, the, the caution that I've, I've given you in the past remains the same that, you know, you are advised to use social media with caution to try to avoid, excuse me, using it for discussion of your official business. And, you know, if you do use it for discussion of your official business, just be careful that you are within the bounds of the law. Some other pitfalls that I advise you to be careful of is that, you know, you, you are subject to, to liability for, for what you say and you may expose the town to liability for, for what you say. And so if, um, you know, what you say is, is deemed to be defamatory and you're found to have been expressing that message in your official capacity, there's a potential for liability to come towards the town. Likewise, you should be aware that everything that you say on social media is a matter of, of public record and can be used against the town, both in administrative and judicial proceedings. And so if you were to, to make a comment based on a project that might be coming in front of the town at some point, the, the applicant might be able to use that, that comment as evidence of, of bias or prejudgment or, you know, to allege violations of their due process. So again, you know, caution is advised. The, the final note of caution, and this relates a little bit more back to the, the terms of the policy itself, and that is that some courts are starting to find that if a public official uses a social, social media platform as an extension of their office, then that platform could be considered a public forum for purposes of First Amendment protections. And so, so what that means is that if someone posts on your page and your page is, is considered to be an extension of your office because you use it primarily for posting about town business or about business that comes or may come in front of the, the Board of Selectmen, then a court could find that that's a, a public forum and your ability to censor individuals or to remove comments that, that you don't agree with becomes very limited. And so while you, you would retain the authority to remove comments that are derogatory, disparaging, discriminatory, patently false, you know, those would all be defensible actions. But, you know, removing a comment that, that you don't agree with or that's critical of, of your performance might be problematic. And so that's another issue that you should be careful of when posting on social media. And, you know, which is why I would suggest that when you do use social media, i- if you're talking about something that is related to town business, that you make it clear that, you know, you're expressing your personal opinions and beliefs as a resident of the town as opposed to an official position as a member of the select board. So that, that will provide you with some, you know, additional measure of protection. So are there any questions about any of these issues? Yes, Mr. Bellbin?
Yeah, um, so to go a little further with that, it's not just a quorum of just people voting, or not voting, people making comments on a social media platform. It also includes if you hit the like button, you like something, acts also could be interpreted as a open meeting law if you have a quorum of members that respond to that. So we all have to be aware about that too, that we may see what somebody wrote, okay? By, by actually going ahead and doing that one action could open up for an open meeting law complaint. That's my first comment. My second one is, do we really need a social media code of conduct if we, if it's already covered under other laws and other guidance of what we already have? Do we really need one? And actually having something in writing, does that open ups up the liability also? Because there is a policy out there and that, that policy could be used against us in litigation for something else.
Mr. Corbo?
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. Mr. Bellbin asked your first point. I absolutely agree. A like is a comment and so you do need to be careful in that respect. As to your second comment, I do recommend the, the policy for the reason that it, it provides you with an additional layer of protection so that if you do remove a person's post or, or block them from, from posting on your page or in, in any way, you know, take action with respect to what they did, you can point to the policy as supporting your actions. So you could say the reason that I removed your post was because it violates our policy. And this way you're less susceptible to someone saying, "You're censoring me based on my viewpoint." Instead you can say, "No, I'm not. I'm censoring you because the, the manner in which you expressed your viewpoint violates our, our policy."
All right. So, say, I go ahead and I post something on Facebook, okay? And it's my opinion, okay? My opinion doesn't follow this code of conduct, okay? Because it's my opinion and it's my post that I put out there, all right? And I don't have to follow this because it's my opinion, okay? Now, how do we disseminate between my post on my Facebook page, all right, and the town? So what you're just basically saying is the social media code of conduct only relates to a town media page, correct?
If I may, Mr. Corbo, my understanding about Facebook is that there's a personal timeline and then there's your official government page. You may not have one. I do. And presumably those two pages, if you will, are different. Is this correct, Mr. Corbo?
So to some extent, yes. So your, your official, you know, select person, Sarah Hewin's page, you know, where you post, you know, notices about upcoming meetings or issues or events, that's likely a public forum and, and that's something in which you're, you're going to have to be very careful about how you moderate. But if you have a, a personal page in which you post information for family and friends, that is not going to be subject to the requirements of the First Amendment and you're, you're certainly free to, to post whatever you want. However, even though it's on your personal page, if you're posting about town business, it's still an extension of, of your position as a select person and you still have to be careful about, you know, making it clear that you're posting in your personal capacity and, but, you know, that if you make a, a statement that bears on a matter, like for example, you just spoke about the, the host community agreement. If one of, one of you were to post something about that agreement and there was to be a, a public records request for all documents relating to the agreement, in my opinion, that post would be part of it, even though it was on your, your personal page because you're discussing official business of the board. So the distinction lies more on the subject matter of what you say rather than where you say it. So, Mr. Bellbin, to your point, it's my understanding as I look at this code of conduct that, first of all, these are suggestions that, you know, the board cannot enforce these, these guidelines against you in any way. You're an elected official. But I think what they're asking is that even in your personal capacity, when you're not, when you're posting about town business, that you not engage in conduct that is abusive, harassing or threatening, that you're not making statements that are knowingly false, that you're not violating an obligation of confidentiality. So, you know, it's sort of, while we're not saying you cannot express your opinion, I think what, what the board is looking for is for other board members and town officials to express their opinions in a, a respectful and a, a way that reflects their, their position as a public official.
Thank you, Mr. Corbo. Is there more discussion? Mr. Hoffman?
I just had a couple of questions. There's really a third category for Facebook pages. There's the personal, there's the select board, the town official, and then also the group ones, the town groups such as like we have Everything Cover, Cover Helping Cover and Here in Open Government. So that's really a third category. So I guess my question is when someone posts on that, are you, and you bring up a town issue. Are we posting as a select person? Do we have to clarify this is my opinion only? Because I know there's been some issues on some of, some, uh, some, you know, issues that are being brought up before the town that get posted on there. I could say if Bob posts something, I really can't comment on it for threat of an open meeting violation if someone had liked it before. Well, you know, if I want to correct something or make an addition to what he posted. So again, that's a third category. A second question off of that, you had said posting separate is an open meeting violation. What if you, is that commenting on, on a previous post or a separate post altogether on the same subject?
Through you, Madam Chair, thank you. So, you know, I'll admit that I am not an active social media user so some of my knowledge might be a little off on that. But, you know, the, the, the idea is that you're, you're not allowed to have a deliberation in any forum that is not a duly posted public meeting. And, and that applies regardless of the format. And so if you have a, a subject of town business and one member makes a post about it that everyone can see, that's fine. Then maybe one other member likes that post. That's also fine. But the moment that a third member gets involved, now you've had a deliberation amongst the quorum of the board. And so whether that is in liking the original post or posting something new about the same subject, it's as if you're having a conversation. And, and, you know, you're required to have those conversations at meetings. And so, you know, if one member posts something and it raises a concern for you, the, the best way to approach that is to ask the chair to put it on an agenda for a meeting. And that this way then everyone on the board can air their opinion or information about the topic in the appropriate forum.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Corbo. Further discussion? Mrs. Bogart?
Uh, two numbers, two, three and four on the code of conduct, to me, for, for lack of a better word, kind of seem like babysitting matters, where if you post something, you're going to have to go back and monitor it and see if anyone else comments on it and then if they're mean, you have to tell them not to be mean. To me, that just, I don't know, that seems a little unreasonable to, to agree to be someone's babysitter. It just seems like it would take time and kind of put you, I, I, I wouldn't want to tell someone else, "Hey, that was mean, be quiet." I've seen it happen on social media. I think it's wrong because then my question too is, what if the other person being mean is another town official? I've seen a town official be horribly nasty on, on a post that someone, that another town official said and they weren't on the same board. So how do you handle that? I, I don't like the babysitting aspect and then there's, there's confusion.
That's a good question. Mr. Corbo?
So, um, you know, through you, Madam Chair, again, these are, are suggestions and guidelines. They're, they're not enforceable, but perhaps, you know, a, a better approach to this problem, you know, might be having some sort of like disclaimer that says that, you know, this is an, an open forum and, you know, nothing that, you know, that is posted on here or, you know, is, should be attributable to me, you know, unless I make the statement or something along those lines. So sort of distance yourself from the type of, of communications that you feel are inappropriate. You know, like the, the people who post on here do not necessarily reflect the, the views of, you know, the administrator of the page, something along those lines. And again, and that only applies to a page that you yourself maintain. So, you know, if you have the, you know, the, the Jen Bogart Facebook page, this code would apply to that, but you're not expected to moderate or be responsible for what happens on these other community forums. You're obviously responsible for your own behavior on those forums, but those forums have their own moderators and are, are responsible for, for their own moderating choices. You do not have to moderate those pages. You're only being asked to moderate your own individual page.
Then I think that should be, I, I love that clarity. I think that clarity should be taken into the actual conduct. If the conduct is kept, I think it should be updated because all it says is, "We request when someone is unfairly attacking another on your post, you take action." But it doesn't specify where that post can be. So I think that, that clarity and insight you just added is very important.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Townsend?
Just a couple of questions, I guess. So as far as, as, as our official pages, if we have a, a select prince page or something like that, are there requirements as to how long we maintain comments on that page? Does that become public record that should be kept for a certain amount of time or how does that, how does that work?
Mr. Corbo?
That's a good question, Mr. Townsend. I don't know what the, what position the supervisor takes in terms of social media posts. There is an exception for records retention with respect to records that are temporary or fleeting in nature. And again, I don't know a whole lot about how Facebook works, but I think that right after a period of time, these things just kind of go away, right?
Well, that's my concern. I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I think quite frankly, it changes all the time. They're constantly changing, changing the rules and the terms of Facebook and it, what, what is active today is gone tomorrow. So it's, it's difficult to know. And I was, I was concerned about that.
And it is difficult to retrieve older statements. I've noticed it only goes back several weeks, maybe at most.
Right. And it's similar with text messages, you know, the same thing. It's like if you have text messages on your phone, they're public records, but I, I don't believe that you're required to maintain them because after a certain point, they do just go away. And certainly once they're deleted, there's no way to get them back. But, you know, I think it just sort of underscores the point that, you know, if you do have public business to discuss, your, your best bet is to, to discuss it in an official way at a meeting rather than on social media.
Mr. Hoffman?
I, I guess my biggest question with the whole social media. as far as the select board, um, I can understand, Mr. Corbo, what you're saying on the official pages. But I'm more concerned with just general statements either on personal pages or on the town pages about town business. And then some of the comments that could be deemed offensive. I know, again, I guess I'm trying to find out what's that fine line between commenting as a citizen and commenting as a town official? Does stating these, this is just my opinion, my personal opinion, does that cover us? I'm more thinking about any possible litigation down the line if someone says something that offends somebody. Um, that, that's my major concern.
Well, and I, I think that that's a legitimate concern. So, you know, as a public official, you have the same rights under the First Amendment as anybody else does. And so you are entitled to go on these forums and to make statements about town business as long as it's clear that you're acting in your individual capacity. However, um, those statements can be used against you, um, in future court proceedings. And the example I gave earlier, I, I think is, um, you know, is worth highlighting again. And that is that, you know, if, if there's a particular project in the town, um, and you speak out against that project. Um, and then when that project comes up for permitting and is ultimately denied, the developer may use your statements against the town and say, um, we never had a chance. They were biased against us, or they, they relied on inappropriate criteria in denying our license. And as evidence of that, here are these Facebook posts. Um, and you know, those posts would be admissible in, in a judicial proceeding, in my opinion. And so, you know, you, again, you are advised, um, to, to be careful. And again, you know, I keep saying it over and over again. And, um, you know, it's, it's really advised that you avoid using social media for town business, um, whenever possible.
Sarah, can I raise a point too?
Philip Fong, we can't see him.
Oh. Okay. Uh, I think in, in prior experience, I, I, some issues that have arisen uh, when members of the, uh, select, uh, board of selectmen, select board would make comments about, uh, town employees. And in doing so, um, they, they compromise, I think people's, people's, I don't want to say people's rights, but should there be any reason for any type of discipline, even if it's not somebody appointed by the select board, selectmen, there's a, there's a pre, there's a, there's a case that the town is predisposed to some sort of personnel action. And I have seen that become a problem. And I think that's, uh, it can be very, um, it's a slippery slope when you make comments about town employees or officers, um, who have rights, particularly paid employees. I think that the board, any board has to be very conscientious of even if you're commenting as an individual, it does present the problem of a predisposition to personnel action. Should that, um, ever become necessary? So again, that situation I've seen, and it does lead to trouble. And please Greg, if you, I don't know if you want to comment on that, um.
Um, before you do Greg, I would actually like that added to this code of conduct. If in fact it is adopted, because I think that's a very important issue that, um, a lot of times people don't realize they, they've just been appointed to a board and they're slamming, you know, the director of whatever it is. Um, they obviously have a right to do that, but they need to understand that they may be opening up themselves and the town to the trouble, litigation of some sort. Again, doesn't mean they can't do it, can't keep people from saying things. But just to have that clause in there to let people know, make them aware that it's a possible consequence.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I can, I can certainly try to work something like that, um, into the policy. And, you know, I do agree with, with Rick's point. Um, you know, I don't want to give too many specific examples here. You know, because I don't know what, what people may or may not have, have posted in the past. And I, I certainly don't want to, um, you know, invite any trouble for you. So I think we'll, we'll just leave it at the, the generic, um, you know, that, you know, again, your, your posts do have the potential of being used against the town.
Thank you. I'd also like, um, a phrase in there. Something to the effect that we're not expected to monitor other forums, which was a, a point that Jen and, and Jim brought up. We're only expected to really monitor our own, um, either timeline or official page. And I'd also like it in this code of conduct that there's a distinction. The distinction that you made Greg is in, in what we say, not where we say it. So that would apply to town Facebook pages as Mr. Hoffman, um, was concerned about as well as our own. Mrs. Bogart?
Um, the, the title is Carver Select Board Suggested Social Media Code of Conduct. Does it only apply to us because we've done a lot of talking about just boards and committees? Or is this something that either does or should apply to every other board or committee?
Well, personally, I believe it should apply to every officer of the town. And, and that definition is going to come up a little bit later when we discuss the finance, uh, committee article. But the, um, annual town report refers to the town officers as every person who's appointed to everything, appointed or elected to everything in town, whether it's earth removal committee or recreation, select board. So.
Then when we adopt this, are we adopting it just for ourselves? Or are we adopting it, um, for every town official?
Well, currently, my understanding is it's just for our board. But Mr. Corbo, would you like to address that for us and then we'll get to you?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So, um, with respect to, um, your authority to do this, it, it is a, a policy of the, the select board. But because the members of the select board are, are elected, you know, there's no mechanism to enforce this. So these are really just, just guidelines. Um, in terms of how it applies to others, um, again, you can issue suggestions and guidelines to other elected boards, but you have no jurisdiction over them. Um, so again, you could not compel them to comply with this. You could require that it be, um, applied to, to members of, of boards or committees that you do appoint. Um, but I, I would be cautious about how it applies to, um, paid employees, um, particularly employees who may be in unions, as there may be, um, bargaining implications to that. Um, but certainly, you know, if you wanted to have something that applied on more of a townwide basis, um, then that's an issue that we could look into for you.
And Jen, were you, were you, weren't you specifically talking about appointed positions, whether or not we appoint them?
No, I just didn't know if, if we adopt this, does it apply to, you know, to the planning board, to the recreation committee, to zoning, to like, to every single thing? Or are we saying we agree to try to follow this, but then no one else has to? Because our conversation is, is a very serious matter. And if we're thinking these things are important for us to know and for us to follow and be aware of, then I think every other board or committee or town entity should also be aware of that and kind of be held to the same standard because we're all, we all represent the town.
Okay. Well, as Mr. Corbo pointed out, we can't enforce this when it comes to elected officials.
Right.
And we can't impose it upon union members because that would have to be negotiated with them.
Well, I'm sorry, I missed to interrupt you, Madam Chair. I, I, I wouldn't come out that strongly and say that it, it can't be imposed because it has to be negotiated. But it raises a question in my mind and, you know, I would want to consult with, um, Attorney Zesson, who handles the, um, labor and employment side of things to make sure that this is not something that, that would have a bargaining implication on the part of the town. I, I don't know, and I don't want to make that as a, as a statement.
Okay. I take it back. Mr. Lefan, do you have any comments?
Well, no, I, I think that between, I think Jen raises a good point. Uh, but I do think that this is and has been a policy, um, of the board for the board. Uh, this is not a policy that has historically, um, applied to, uh, any other entity. To the extent that the board may recommend this to other elected boards, um, and boards that you appoint, that may be a very good idea. But in terms of, um, your ability to require, um, compliance with this, even compliance by, you know, each of you, um, I, I think that, um, that that's, I don't think that's, I don't think it's practical because it, you really can't address it or enforce it. You can't even enforce it among yourselves. Um, I know this is more of a, a guideline, um, like gentleman's agreement, so to speak, um, not to be sexist there. Um, among, among you. And so I think we have to think of it as, you know, in that context. I don't know if that was any help, but, uh.
Yeah, basically we, we can't enforce this, Jen, even amongst ourselves, and we could recommend it. I don't know if that helps you out. Yeah. Okay. Mr. Townsend?
Uh, no, I just, that was exactly what I was going to say. I, I believe these are just, uh, these are just guidelines. I mean, we're elected officials and whether you choose to follow them or don't follow them, I think it really is up to, up to you. I, I, there's no real enforcement, uh, in here. So that, that just, I agree.
Mr. Corbo?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. And to, to those two points, um, you know, even if, if it's not enforceable as the other town officials, um, there's no reason why the board couldn't just put it out there and say, you know, we ask that all town officials comply with this code of conduct, you know, for, for the benefit of everyone. And yes, while it is up to them to decide whether or not to comply, you know, you've at least done something. And, you know, you can, um, you can show that, that you're trying to, you know, maintain an appropriate, um, you know, um, decorum amongst online use by, by town officials. And, you know, I mean, it's, it doesn't seem to me like something that could hurt for you to make a statement like that.
Can I?
I'm sorry. I was just going to ask, um, do, do most towns that you deal with have some type of social media code of conduct?
Yes, I, I've, as I was getting ready for this meeting, I come, came across a number of examples of, um, social media codes of conduct. Thank you.
Can I make, uh, I guess a comment, uh, Sarah? I mean, this goes to, to Greg's point, um, to the extent that, and I just, just thought of this while you, while you were deliberating, to the extent that, for instance, another board or committee, um, makes a comment, um, that may be derogatory, a board or committee that may criticize, you know, in an, in an inappropriate way, you know, a town official. And may do what Greg suggested, may make comments about, you know, particular projects that could. I think to the extent that, that the, that the select board has essentially denounced that type of conduct, you know, then there may be a benefit to that.
There may be a benefit to what?
To, for the board to have, have basically denounced the type of conduct um, that we had discussed that could compromise the town, whether it's towards a permitting process or whether it's towards, um, a public official of, another public official, paid or otherwise. To the extent that, that those comments by elected officials and appointed officials on other boards and committees um, may act inappropriately, it may be used to the board to have a policy that denounces that type of conduct. Because ultimately, when the town gets, um, when there's legal action against the town or a board or committee, ultimately it's the town as a whole. So as the chief executive board of the town, um, it may have some value. Um, and I don't know if, if, if I'm taking it a little too far, but I'm kind of, uh, putting some of the thoughts together that I've heard from the board members and from Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Lefan. Mr. Belbin?
Uh, Greg, can you forward us, uh, some of those other policies from other towns? Um, so we can take a look at those, uh, because we may want to adopt some of those or not adopt them. I mean, personally, if we have a policy, there should be some enforcement mechanism. We can't afford something and why have a policy? That's my opinion. I just, right now, if we can't afford something, then we shouldn't really have it, policy that is unenforceable. Um, suggestions are one thing, but I mean, if it's covered under other laws or guidelines, that's fine. Um, but that's just my opinion.
So if I may, Mr. Belbin, I want to point out that we have financial policies that we can't enforce either. Um, but as we discussed, uh, in prior meetings and, and actually adopted those policies, I think we decided that we wanted to keep them because it's good to have a little guideline there, even if we can't always live up to what we want to do. Um, if we can't always put away 10% of whatever, it's good to know that that's one of our goals. And so that's just an example. Same, same with the, um, select board code of conduct. Anyway, Mr. Hoffman?
You know, just to tag on what you're saying, Sarah, I, I agree. Especially for new members, they'll know what to expect, what's expected of them on the select board. And if this goes on to other committees as well. You know, Jen, you know, I know you don't want to babysit everybody, but some people sometimes need that reminder, hey, you're, you're representing the town. You shouldn't be saying certain things because again, it can come back in litigation against the town. So it never hurts to be a reminder, you know, Bob, like you said, it's not going to be enforceable. But, you know, I just, I think I, just to keep them there. That's just my personal.
Okay.
So, so I'm sorry. No, I was, I was going to say, just similar to the, the last issue, um, would it be taking the comments that you've made and asking Greg to provide any other provisions, uh, that he may recommend? And that could come back to the full board for, at, at the next meeting?
Certainly. And, and with those examples from, from other towns too, that, um, Mr. Belbin?
Right. And, and I have the, uh, our network of town administrator types throughout the region. It's, um, I can certainly, about 30 to 40 people. Um, I can certainly make that request of, of other towns, uh, to see what they have, um, available. And they can, I'm sure they'll be, I'll probably be flooded with them, but, um, but I have access to that, Bob, in a fairly simple manner.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Lefan. So is that someone making a motion to table this discussion till the next meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have to second?
I'll second.
Question made and seconded. Any further discussion? On favor?
Jen Bogart, aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Robert Belbin says aye.
Eric Wilson says aye.
Moving on. Um, town council discussion, possible vote? New council, newly council, or continue with existing? Um, Mr. Belbin, I believe this was your item for discussion. Would you like to start us off?
Um, we've had town council for a long time and, and one of the things that I like to see is, uh, changes, in our town council. Um, there's been a number of different issues and we did have a meeting with Mr. Corbo, Attorney Corbo here. And, um, we brought some of those issues out. Another one has come forward. Um, in regards to with the other two select board members here about I call lawyer shopping for the right answer, um, which I think is not appropriate answer. Um, I don't like that. I would like to turn around and, um, make a motion that we submit out a new RFP for town council. And, uh, open a page, are free to join into that too. And that's my motion.
Is there a second?
As awkward as this is, I, I will second it.
Okay. Um, now for discussion, um, I, I'd like to point out to board members who, um, are, are new or relative. Now, for discussion, I'd like to point out to board members who are new or relatively new, that we actually did this, and I believe the year was 2009, 2010. Greg and Rick may remember the exact year. So the Board of Selectmen, at that time, we were called that, appointed a legal, legal review committee, I believe it was called. And they did that. They asked, they did an RFP, they listed all their requirements for what they felt the town needed in a town council. I believe they had maybe three or four firms apply. And at the time, they concluded that, it was concluded that KP Law actually provided all the requirements the town needed. And it was the only firm that supplied all those requirements. So I just want people to understand that this has happened before in the past. It's, it has been a while, but that was the, that was the result at the time.
Can I make a couple of points, Sarah?
Please do.
Number one, I think when this issue came up previously, a member or members of the board, and I believe maybe it was you, Mr. Townsend, suggested that we have town council available for this conversation. The second point, as much as it may be awkward for Greg, the second point I will make is that when we had the conversation with Sarah, Bob, and I, and I know there was some some concerns and criticism from the board that we did that, but be that as it may, I think part of the, what came up at that was maybe a lack, some misunderstanding as to what the role of town council is in term, in its representation of the town. And and I don't know if that may be something worth discussing. The third point is that, in my last experience, just within the last year, I've gone through this same process. So I've seen, I've seen what's out there. And again, keeping in mind, it's no, no secret, having been in the business this long. And to Bob's point, I think it's not a change, it's the continuity that is the, is a tremendous value to the town. When a town council can remember something that happened specifically five years ago and has all the records on that, that is, that's invaluable to the town. I will also say that there isn't any other firm that has the breadth of experience within a firm and is as economical as KP Law. Again, I've seen this just within the last year. By far, the most economical firm is KP Law. And there are some local, some sole practitioners out there, and I don't know that we want somebody who is basically subbing out work, whether it's land use or labor or other types of specialized services. I don't think it's best to have those subcontracted. I think it's best to have all those resources within one firm. So, you know, I try to be careful about staying in my lane in terms of, you know, you know, disagreeing with any member of the board in a public setting. But I really do believe that KP Law is as good, is the best out there and the most economical. And to the extent that there are any, and I know, Jen, you've raised this, and I think it's a valid point, to the extent that there may be some concern, confusion about decisions that may seem to conflict, I think, I think an advantage is to the extent that that those types of questions come through my office, that that those issues can be eliminated. Because sometimes, you know, we, you know, we don't always, we don't necessarily ask, and this is not a criticism, Jen, because I've been guilty of it myself, we don't always ask the right question. And, and I think, I think that's critical, that we make sure that that when we ask for legal counsel, whether it's, you know, whoever it is, you know, that there's some, there's some, you know, I guess that there's a, you know, a central question, a core question, because we may have other members who may be questioned, have the same, a similar type question. So I think that to the extent that this office is a clearinghouse for questions, I think there's an advantage to that. And I think that how we use town council is as important as what we might ask town council. So unless there's any questions of me, I will, I will shut my mouth and let the board discuss. And certainly, if Mr. Corbo has any comments.
So I would like to make a couple of comments. I appreciate yours, Rick, because one concerns, the meeting that Bob and I had as chair and vice chair with Mr. Corbo, and Mr. LaFawn was present. And I have to say for the record that my concerns were actually alleviated. And it, it was a very important moment to me where it was made very clear to me by Mr. Corbo that he represents this board, but he also, he represents a quorum of the board. So that in the past, when, for example, maybe I disagreed, just as an example, I might have disagreed with some of the previous board members on an issue, Mr. Corbo had to follow the direction of the quorum of the board. And that one sort of hit me right straight in the face. So that's important, I think, for us to remember. I also agree about the continuity issue. It is good, you know, change can be good, but not always. It's really important, I think, to have an institutional and historical knowledge of what's happened in the past. The, this board members, these board members change, cases continue, new people come on, they may not know about what's going on with this case. So I'm just agreeing with Mr. LaFawn on that point. And the point about Jen and Jim getting two different answers, I think it's very clear, when you look at that bylaw 2.2.8, Jen, which concerned you and Mr. Hoffman, when you were on the planning board and just had been elected to be select board members. But that bylaw, as Mr. LaFawn pointed out, depends on how you, how you ask the question, because the bylaw, in my mind, spoke specifically to the two members of the board who, at the time, were also town employees. It was namely me and a former police sergeant, I guess he's still a police sergeant, who was also a board member at the time. So that was inserted at that town meeting. Luckily, at the very last minute, by Mr. Corbo, I know because I was sitting next to him, and I said, you know, if this bylaw passes, I'm out of a job tomorrow. And he said, whoops, let's put that in there, with the exception of the people here who have, they can be allowed to serve out their terms. And so that was what it, and I believe it actually says, at the time, who are members at the time. So for the longest time, I looked at that, and I thought that also applied to at any time. But I don't believe it does. So, okay, I've talked enough. Who's next?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Townsend?
Just a couple of points. I think, I think continuity with town council is very important. Now, obviously, if you had, if there was substantial issues out there, you should always look to, to different things. But I think, I think continuity with council is very important, because you develop a relationship, and they, they know the town. I've always been impressed, one of the things I've always been impressed with, with Copeland and Page since I've been on the board, is that not only do they have that historical knowledge of the town, but they have experts that deal in different type of law that comes before the town. So you can call, and you can get to talk to somebody who knows that particular aspect of what you're talking about. They don't have to farm it out, they don't have to call another firm, they don't have to go somewhere. You can always get that specific person who knows that type of law. So I've been very impressed with that. And, and, you know, I understand economics, and sometimes it's good to, to, to check them things out. You always want to save money somewhere. But I don't want to say, town council is not someplace that I'm looking to save money on. I'm looking to get the best town council we can for the town. And I personally, speaking for myself, I've been pretty impressed with the job Copeland and Page has done since I've been on the board. My thoughts.
Mr. Belbin?
Yeah, that, the bylaw that you had stated, I was there at town meeting, I remember it quite well. It was just to protect the two employees that were physically there at that time, and it was not supposed to go on for other town employees in the future. It was just, once this bylaw is set in place, if you're existing, and you keep your job until the end of the term, and then that's it. So that'll bring me further along when we talk about the other stuff toward the end of the meeting. But to deal with this is that, if we don't know what else is out there, and how are we going to know what we have here? We know what we have, but there could be something else out there, all right? That could save us money and still provide us the same opportunities. So my feeling is, is that, you go ahead, we take a look out there, see what else is out there, find out, and then we move forward. Like I said, we did have that discussion with Mr. Corbo, and depending on what the board decides here now. But I really think that we have to look at what else is out there, all right? And if we don't, we're not doing a service to our town. If we don't look out, elsewhere, find out what's out there.
Thank you, Mr. Belbin. Mr. Hoffman?
Got a couple of comments. First, I know, Bob, in the beginning, you had mentioned a couple of meetings, a couple of issues. I guess, why haven't the rest of the board heard about those issues? That, you know, that's one question. And I agree with the continuity that everyone's talking about. The perfect example is the bylaw that affected Jen and I when we first got elected, that there was some confusion. But then Mr. Corbo stepped in and gave his opinion, because he was there, like you said, Sarah, he was there, made that. So he clarified that. So until we talked to, actually, to Mr. Corbo, he was the one that clarified and said, no, we cannot be on both boards. So again, if we were with another firm that wasn't there when this bylaw was made, they wouldn't have had that insight that he did. So again, I'm just, I'm just all in favor for continuity as well.
Mrs. Bogart? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Well, I mean, since Jim and I are the hot topic here, I guess, like, that, that is a big concern of mine, because to Rick's point, I wasn't the one who asked the question. I want that to be clear. I did not speak to town council at all. Pretty certain Jim didn't either. But I know that when I won, I was approached by a town employee asking if I was going to remain on both boards, to which I said, well, can I? And the employee came back and said, yes, Ms. Questle said you can. And I said, oh, wow, okay, that's not what I expected. And then, I don't remember how many days later, the same employee came back and said, no, sorry, Mr. Corbo said you can't. And in my mind, that just raises a red flag. And, okay, laws are up to interpretation, bylaws are up to interpretation. So I appreciate that Mr. Corbo was there the night that it was adopted. But since things are open to interpretation, it does, well, is that discrediting Ms. Questle's interpretation? Or what's to say another lawyer couldn't interpret it? And, and make the case that we could both have? Not that I'm saying we could, or that's a different matter. But it raised a red flag that, that we got two different answers.
So if I may, Mrs. Bogart, on this issue, I don't know who this certain town employee was that you're talking about who first asked Ms. Questle. But whoever that was should probably not have asked Ms. Questle, because she's a land use lawyer. She's not a bylaw or, she doesn't do the things Greg does. Let's put it that way. So Greg is the one who probably should have been asked to start with.
Can I, can I chime in here, Sarah?
Yes, you may, Mr. LaFawn.
And again, I think the point I raised earlier is how you use town council is critical. And I don't know what town employee that Jen is referencing, but had that, you know, use of council is supposed to come through this office. So if somebody asks a question of council that I'm not aware of, it's, it's not helpful, because I don't know what question is being asked. I don't know the context it's being asked, you know, in. And I don't even know if it's the same question being asked. So I think to hold KP Law responsible for a communication or miscommunication by a third party, I don't think that's fair. That, that amounts to hearsay, essentially. Even if the, even if the person you're referring to is acting in complete good faith, that's not how you effectively use town council, in my opinion.
Correct. Just, just the same way, just so you're not off the hook here, Greg, I wouldn't ask Greg Corbo for a definitive land use question, other than something that's glaringly obvious, because Ms. Questle is the land use lawyer. So, Mr. Belbin?
Yeah, so I want to go back to what Jim had asked the question for, is that, yes, Jim, me, Sarah, Rick, and Greg sat down for a meeting. I had issues at, between Copeland and Page, and also Greg, of some of the decisions that he personally made, and his opinions that he's made in the past, okay? And those are my concerns, because some of them have to do with town meeting and some with other issues, all right? I want to be aware with Mr. Corbo is that I don't want to turn around and open the town up for legal issues now here, for fear of, they may retaliate against us. Not to say you would, Greg, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that I don't want to say anything that would harm you now, Greg, to what we had in a private conversation in a room.
Yes, then don't. That's a good idea.
That's, that's why, Jim, I'm not saying as much as I could say of what I said during that meeting that we had in private session with Greg about critiques of performance. But needless to say, my feeling is, is that we need to look at what else is out there. Because when we go to town meeting, we seek out our town council to have an override spectrum view of everything from land use, conservation, regular town bylaws, and other legal ramifications. So it's an overall general practitioner that we're using at town, at town meeting. So.
And I'm sure Mr. Corbo consults with the rest of his team before town meeting on those things. I mean, I'm not suggesting that he doesn't do that, you know?
Sarah, I think one of the questions that was raised in when you and I and Bob met with Greg, I think, I think was, was something that maybe should be explained, because I think it was a decent, a valid question that Bob asked. And it did have to, I think it went right to the core, what is the role of town council? I think, Bob, and I'm not, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I know one of the things you raised is like, specifically, like, what is the role of town council at a town meeting, so to, you know, you know, as one example. I think it was a good question, and I think it's worth asking Greg for some comments on the role of town council and town council's representation of a board, whether it's this select board or select board anywhere else in the state.
Thank you, Mr. LaFawn. Mr. Corbo?
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. To all the members of the board, I, you know, I appreciate all of the things that you've said. And, you know, I, I can understand, you know, Mr. Belbin's desire to, you know, see what else is out there. I think that's a natural, you know, thing to think about when you've had someone for such a long period of time, you know. But, but I hope that you'll see the value that I bring to the table, and that the firm brings to the table, and we'll see that it is not likely that you're going to find a, a comparable level of expertise or a comparable level of value out there. So to answer Rick's specific question, and this is a question that we get a lot, and it's one that tends to be confusing to people. You know, people believe that, that town council represents everyone in the town. And that's not quite the case. You know, we represent the town as a corporate entity. And that corporate entity is managed by the Board of Selectmen. And so the, the direction of town council follows the lead of, as Sarah pointed out, a majority of the Board of Selectmen. And it's my job to help the Board of Selectmen achieve its goals within the confines of the law. And so in that respect, I offer you opinions, I assist you in drafting legal documents, and I have a, personally have a very broad range of experience. I not only, you know, represent Um, I not only, you know, represent the town of Carver, but, but several other towns as their town council, um, at town meetings, um, at, at board meetings, I, I handle inquiries concerning, um, open meeting law, public records, conflict of interest, um, general bylaw interpretations, um, land use enforcement issues. Um, and, you know, I have knowledge of zoning and, and planning procedure, conservation procedure, real estate law, um, but I don't have the same depth of knowledge on land use matters that Amy has, um, or on real estate matters that, that Katie Klein has. And so you get the, the benefit of that knowledge, um, by, by having us all working together as a team. And, and it's a small team, um, even though we have forty some odd lawyers, um, your team is essentially, you know, me for general legal inquiries, Amy for land use inquiries, Katie Klein for, for real estate, and Tim Zesson for labor and employment. Um, now, that's not to say we might not have other attorneys step up every now and again for particular issues, um, but, you know, that's your team and, and that team is there for you. We've, we've been there for you for a long time and we do, we understand, you know, the, the needs of the town, that the, the nature of, of the issues that go on in town, um, and we can help, you know, craft answers to your questions that help further your goals. And, you know, when we get to town meeting, you know, there might be a, a complicated zoning proposal that, um, Amy worked with the town planner on, you know, for weeks or months to get it ready for town meeting. Um, and, you know, when I get to town meeting, I've seen that work and I've met with her and reviewed that work and am in a position to answer any questions that come up. And, um, you know, frankly, I believe that, um, I've, I've provided many, um, good and clear answers for the members at town meeting with regards to proposals that have been put forward. Um, but, you know, sometimes there, there is a conflict between what the Board of Selectmen wants to accomplish and what, um, the members of town meeting might want to accomplish. And, you know, if that conflict arises, it's my obligation to side with the Board of Selectmen. You know, that's my, that's who I serve. Um, and so, you know, while there, there might be a, a petitioned article, um, that comes before town meeting, when I conduct my initial review of the warrant, I typically don't review those petitioned articles, um, because they haven't been put forward by the Board of Selectmen or a town official. And I may flag an issue or a thought about that article and will say, you know, if you want me to analyze this further, I'd be happy to. And sometimes you say yes, um, and I will provide an opinion or assistance in crafting that petitioned article to achieve a certain result. Um, other times you may say, no, we don't care about that, and in which case I won't say anything about it. Um, and, you know, uh, but in that regard, I follow your lead, um, and I will continue to do that. And the way that I follow your lead typically is, um, I rely on Rick to communicate with me what your needs are. And, and the way that we try to operate is that, you know, all inquiries from, from town officials, you know, should be going to Rick, um, and then he forwards them on to me and either I handle that inquiry and give a response, or I assign the appropriate attorney, um, to provide the response for them. Um, and, you know, that procedure has, has worked well for us for, for many years. And, um, you know, it, it worked, um, you know, across various, um, you know, town administrators, it's worked across various, um, board members holding office, and that's the way that, that we maintain consistency. Um, and, you know, we do, we communicate with each other, we try not to give inconsistent answers, um, but, you know, sometimes in our, um, our zeal to, to be responsive, you know, we, we may, um, i- issue and, and answer that requires further, further thought. And with respect to that issue between, you know, members of the planning board and the Board of Selectmen, that was an issue that did, um, require further thought. And, you know, we got to the right answer, you know, which is the important thing. And as, as Rick said, you know, by going through the, the appropriate channels, we can ensure that you're getting the right answer. Um, we can't always give you the answer that you want, um, you know, that's just the, the nature of us being town council. We have to advise you, um, to, to comply with the law. Um, but, you know, I, I will very rarely say and give you an outright no, um, to a policy direction that you're trying to take. Instead, you know, I will try to find a way that you can achieve your goals consistently with the law. Um, and I, I've been doing that for a long time. I believe I've been very successful in doing that. Um, you know, there, there have been many different board members that I have worked with over, over the years in, in Carver. And, um, you know, I believe that, that me and the other members of our firm have, have helped you achieve a, a lot of, um, a lot of goals over the years and, you know, that, that Carver is a, a, a better place, you know, for it. And, um, you know, I hope that, that you believe that as well. Um, and, you know, I certainly respect your wishes and your decisions and, you know, I will continue to, to work with you as faithfully and, um, as hard as I can. And, and certainly if there are issues or concerns, I'm, I'm happy to address those. Um, you know, no one's perfect and, and no one is above, um, having, you know, having to, to correct any mistakes that they might make. Um, and I'm always happy to do that and I'm always happy to, you know, take responsibility if, if you're not satisfied with the way that, that something has happened and to correct it going forward. You know, that's, that's all that we can do is in any walk of life. And, um, you know, so, so I'm hopeful that, you know, we, we can continue this relationship that we've had. I mean, I've personally have been working for the town for at least fifteen years, if, if not more than that. Um, and, you know, I hope to, to continue it, um, for a long time to come.
Thank you, Mr. Corbo. Um, is there, is there something new, Mr. Belbin?
Yeah, um, so Attorney Corbo brought up, um, that he works for the Board of Selectmen at town meeting, and, and that's concerning to me because if town meeting members, it's town meeting is all of the members of town meeting, if they bring up an issue and one issue that did got brought up was that, uh, a question was made by me and it wasn't answered, and, and the response was after the fact was that the moderator didn't, um, recognize me. And, and that concerns me because town council should be representing the residents that are there at town meeting for legal questions related to things like that. And if he has a, a question is put on the table, all right, and he has a duty to go ahead and answer that. Um, and it wasn't until the following year where he was basically forced to answer the question. And it's, it's one of those things that you say, you know what, had you answered this the year before, you would have turned around and had an opportunity to maybe direct what goes on the following year. Um, but it's those things like that that says, well, I work for the Board of Selectmen. I, you know, it's a corporation, the town of Carver is the corporation. When we get to town meeting, this is town meeting for all town residents, and if we're going to have council, and we want council to represent the whole town and all the town meeting members that are there to go ahead and say, hey, give us an opinion on this or that, and, and that's where I have an issue with. So, like I said, my motion is still there, is to go ahead and seek an RFP for a new town council. Uh, it's just to look around to see what else is out there, all right? Uh, we can create a committee if you want that to be put on the motion, I'll be happy to do that, that we create a committee, um, for this, to look at it, but...
Thank you, Mr. Belbin.
And that's my opinion.
So the motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I'd submit one quick question. Uh, to Bob's issue that he just brought up, would, is that a standard procedure for any town council, for any town, that they do represent the select board? So this isn't something out of the ordinary?
Mr. Corbo?
Uh, thank you through you, Madam Chair. Um, yes, that is, um, universal, um, that, that town council, um, I, well, I shouldn't say it's universal, sometimes in cities, you know, the mayor might have council and the city council might have their own council, but with respect to towns, um, you know, town council is generally appointed by an answerable to the Board of Selectmen. And, you know, I would just like to add that with respect to, to town meeting and that particular issue, um, you know, as town council, um, I sit in the same position as everyone else in town meeting in that I am not allowed to speak unless recognized by the moderator. Um, you know, and that, that applies to all of you, it applies to all of the, the people who, um, you know, sit in, in the gallery. Um, the moderator controls town meeting, and if the moderator does not recognize me to speak, I am not authorized to speak. Um, and, you know, I can make suggestions to the moderator, but, but ultimately it's his call. And in that particular instance, I was not recognized by the moderator to speak.
Mr. Belbin, I think we need to move on. The motion's been made and seconded to seek, do an RFP to look for a new council. All those in favor?
Aye. Robert Belbin says aye.
All those opposed? Mr. Hoffman?
Jim Hoffman says no.
Mrs. Bogart?
Uh, yeah, I was muted. Jim Bogart says aye.
You say aye?
Yeah, I was muted at that time, sorry.
Right. Mr. Townsend?
Uh, I say no. Mark Townsend says no.
Barry Hewen says no. Okay.
Madam Chair, I wonder if I could ask for a five-minute break?
Yes, Mr. Hoffman.
If that's possible?
Yes, absolutely. I was going to do so myself.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, before we break, do you, um, need me on for the rest of the meeting? Do you want me to talk about the finance committee issue?
Um, I think it's advisable, don't you think, Mr. Lefon? Just Greg, around to that one?
Well, seeing where we already have them, um, what's another ten minutes?
Right. Thank you.
Sorry, Greg.
That's okay.
Is everyone here? I don't see Mr. Lefon. Um, Elaine, do we have Mr. Lefon somewhere?
Yep, he's still in his office, so he's there.
Okay, well, he's not on our, he's not in our Zoom meeting.
All right, I'll go check.
Thank you. While she's getting, um, Rick back in the meeting, we have, the next item is the finance committee bylaw discussion and possible vote to ask the town administrator to draft proposed update clarifying the intent of the existing bylaw. And, um, just to start off this discussion, um, I know we had had an email exchange, uh, you and, you and I, Greg, about this. Um, well, actually, it started with me and Rick having a lively debate about what this bylaw meant, and we concluded that if you are an officer of the town, you cannot also then be on the finance committee. And, and the, the definition of officer of the town, I took from the official, um, annual town report, which gets published every year. So if you open it up, it says officers of the town, and it lists every single committee, board, commission, um, appointed, elected, you name it. Everybody's an officer. Um, and that, I believe was your conclusion as well, Greg? Um, if you'd like to speak to that?
Um, yeah, sure. Thank you, um, through you, Madam Chair. So, um, you know, the, the way that I, um, view this bylaw is that it prohibits, um, three categories of people from holding positions on the finance committee. Um, those that are an elected or appointed town officer, a regular town employee, or a person holding a position of financial responsibility for the town. Um, given those, those definitions, um, it is honestly difficult for me to come up with an example of somebody who has a relationship with the town and does not fall into one of those three categories. Um, so, you know, it would be my opinion, I mean, obviously I would look at it on a, on a case-by-case basis, and, you know, I suppose if you were somebody who was on some sort of ad hoc advisory committee, um, that, that you would, um, not be subject to this prohibition. Um, but, you know, it, it does seem like, you know, some clarity should be offered here, um, you know, to determine, you know, what, what is the intent of the town? Who do you want to have serving on the, on the finance committee? And who do you not want to have serving on the finance committee? Um, and, you know, perhaps we can look at some, some language changes to, to make it more clear.
Okay. Um, anyone have some other thoughts on this?
Uh, Madam Chair, I, I would just suggest, and I think I've done this in the past too, that we somehow incorporate the wording of the, the capital outlay bylaw into the finance committee bylaw, which is very clear that says if you're on the fi- you're on the capital outlay committee, you don't serve on another committee. And I think that would bring a lot of guidance here. You don't, we don't need to call a lawyer to get interpretations, it's pretty clear. But if you're on the fi- you're on the FinCom, you're not serving somewhere else.
Okay.
And I think that was the intent way back when.
Yeah. I think, I think it was. It was always, we always acted as if that was the case. Yes, Mrs. Bogart?
I second Mark's sentiment. That's all. He said it perfectly. Very good.
Very good. Mr. Belbin?
I actually third that. Um, I agree also. Um, now, this, this would have to come as a bylaw change, which I'll talk further along at, before the end of the meeting about it. Um, I also have to say, if we're going to make changes or whatnot to this, um, I think the finance committee needs to have a say in this too, because it is part of their, their forte of here to say, all right, this is what we, we as a Board of Selectmen, yeah, we can go ahead and put out possible changes to this bylaw and bring it to town meeting. Um, but we should also turn around and incorporate the finance committee too, to some of the discussions that we have with this. So, um, like I said, I'll discuss this further along in the meeting, but I agree with Mark.
Mr. Hoffman?
Well, I'm going to make you the end of the cycle as well, with Mark. But, um, on this, does finance committee or council on aging, are we looking to change to take the council on aging out of that as well?
I, I, I don't know. Mr. Lefon, do you have any thoughts?
Um, I'm sorry, I missed, I missed the question.
In the, in the, uh, finance committee bylaw, it also has in four point three point seven, point seven, it mentions finance committee or council on aging. Um, and so Jim, Ms. Goodman wants to know, are we taking that or council on aging out of there? Is that correct, Jim?
Right. I just didn't see the connection between the two, I guess.
Yeah, Jim, yeah, I think you're right on the money. I, I've never really seen it either. Um, I think what that is, it's a, I think it's a holdover, uh, from, I know there was a bylaw update at some point, I think when the legislative act that created a town administrator position and expanded the board, um, the board members, membership on the board. I think that was one of the, kind of a holdover from prior bylaws. So I, I would agree, I don't think that it, it really belongs there. Um, I will say that with regard to the finance committee, you know, um, as you know, that the chair holds some other positions, but he's not the only one. There are others, um, who have, I think, the, Ms. Zweigman is, is, um, on the library trustees. Um, so I think it fan is to everybody, um, clarifying the bylaw. Um, again, we know the intent, but clarifying the bylaw, um, I think is the, is the, the way to proceed at the moment. I agree with Mark on that. And then once the bylaw is, is, uh, is, I think, uh, when there's no question about the interpretation, then I think, um, the, those who maybe hold multiple positions, um, can make, make, make their decisions as to how they want to proceed.
Yep. And, um, Mr. Lefon, you were here when Mr. Townsend, um, brought up the point which got a second and a third from this.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was having technical difficulty, so I, I apologize if, if I'm being redundant, so...
No, 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 you weren't redundant. Actually, you didn't, I don't think you heard what Mr. Townsend said. He wants the language to incorporate the language. the language used in the Capital Outlay Bylaw.
Madam Chair, if I could, I have that language in front of me. If I could just read it. Basically, it says, unless otherwise provided, no member may also be a member of any other committee, board, or commission. And I think that's pretty clear.
Mr. Corbell, you wanted to say something?
Uh, yes, thank you through you, Madam Chair. So what about paid employees who are not members of a board or commission?
Mr. Corbell, could I could I ask that does someone who receives a stipend from the town, are they a paid employee?
Um, I do believe that they are considered to be paid, yes.
Okay.
But I guess I was thinking more along the lines of, you know, a a police officer or the town planner or some someone like in in that type of position.
Well, the only reason I ask is I I believe the Finance Committee members themselves receive stipends. So if we don't address that wording in some way, we're almost excluding the members themselves from the Finance Committee, so.
Make my job a lot easier.
Um, any other comments?
No. I I would think, Sarah, that everybody kind of knows what they want to achieve. So I don't think it would take much for me me working with Greg to provide the board a draft of a proposed bylaw to to achieve that. And if it's the board's will, I I do think, and to Jim's point, that perhaps we should, you know, break the COA out of you know, disconnect that from the Finance Committee bylaw discussion.
No. I, Madam Chair, I I also agree with Mr. Belbin that I think before we at when we discuss this, I think we should incorporate the Finance Committee into that meeting. Just to bring them in and 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 discuss it.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Mr. Belbin?
Um, I actually have a couple of people that said they're trying to get into the meeting, and the host isn't letting them in. So.
I don't see, I do not see anyone in the waiting room.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, like I said, I just got messages from people saying that they can't get in.
I I see no one in the waiting room at this time. There are 14 participants. A lot of them have their audio and their their visual off.
Well, that's fine.
And and Area 58 may have a different perspective, but I can't see anyone in the waiting room. Sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
Thanks. So should we have a motion in a second to let the Mr. LaFond work with Mr. Corbell on this?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Um, just that I want to make it clear that once whatever is drafted, that we sit down and have a meeting with the Finance Committee.
I think that was clear.
To go through that. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye. Robert Belbin says aye.
Mrs. Bogart?
Jim Bogart, aye.
Mr. Townsend?
Mark Townsend says aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Barry Hewen says aye. Okay, great. Thank you. Um, the next item is the Discussion on Possible Vote to Waive Fees for Use of Sherwood Park and gazebo for Carver residents, town, Carver municipal entities, boards, committees, et cetera, and nonprofits upon approval by the Select Board. So.
Sarah, could you just, I I don't know if Greg's still there, but if he is, if you could maybe excuse him, so.
Certainly. Your excuse, Mr. Corbell. Sorry. I appreciate you being here.
Hey, thank you, Madam Chair. Have a good day, everyone. It was good to see you.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Yeah, so um since I actually put this on the agenda, it was an item that came up once in the past. I've actually revised it in my head before this meeting to read to waive fees for use of Sherwood Park and gazebo for town of Carver municipal entities, boards, committees, et cetera, and nonprofits upon approval of the Select Board, because a Carver nonprofit, Carver nonprofits includes would include churches, it includes scouts, it includes um the red hat, the red hot mamas, or whatever, the red hat mamas, I think is the name of the group. And then also people groups like the Agricultural Commission, who holds the farmer's market. I just that that was the one that kind of stuck in my craw, that we're we're charging a town commission to use our Sherwood Park. They're not making any money off of it. They're trying to promote agriculture. Anyway, that's my proposed possible vote. And I know, Jen, that it would exclude childcare facilities. If that's something you want to put in there, I don't have that in here for the simple reason that it wasn't clear to me where we would stop. Well, let's include this business and that business, and soon nobody's. Anyway, you get the picture.
Actually, Sarah, I'll second your motion for those wording.
Oh, well, I.
Because that was a motion.
I can't make a motion. I can't make a motion as the Chair.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second that motion for discussion. See ya.
Mr. LaFond?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I have a comment, but but I'll certainly defer to Mr. Belbin first.
Go ahead, Bob. I'm sorry.
Um, this doesn't preclude us from a nonprofit from outside of our town coming in and saying, hey, it's paying a fee. We're just gonna turn around and say, okay, we're exempting town nonprofits, churches, or whatnot, utilize Sherwood Park. They still have to go through the application process. They just don't have to pay a fee.
Correct.
And a nonprofit from outside wants to ask us to waive the fee, it's our prerogative if we do it or not.
It's our prerogative, but they would have to ask. Yes, you're correct. And it also would exempt all the municipal entities, boards, committees, and commissions.
Right.
Carver, yes, Mrs. Bogart.
Oh, are we defining nonprofit? Like?
It has to be a 501(c)(3). It's a very specific definition.
So let's make sure that that's in there.
Google.
Yeah.
I did. Our church is nonprofit, because I knew they were, but I just wanted to make sure that things hadn't changed. Are the Boy Scouts nonprofit? Yes, they are. I mean, it's a 501(c)(3). It's a very specific nonprofit designation.
Then can we make sure that's in there? Because what's to say I'm gonna come in and say, hey, I'm gonna rent that, and I'm a nonprofit, my kid's birthday party, I'm not gonna make profits on my kid's birthday party. So let's make sure that 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 language is in there, that clarification.
It should say, I believe, either 501(c)(3) or 501(c)(4), the the two different types of nonprofits. Mr. LaFond, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, just a quick, a quick point. At the end of that proposed motion, it states that upon approval by the Select Board, is that you know, is that kind of redundant? Because if you're taking a blanket vote to allow these waiving the fees for these organizations, you know, and still requiring approval by the Board of Selectmen, I mean, the Select Board, are you are you basically on a on a application-by-application basis determining whether or not you're going to do this? Anyway, so that that's that's my question.
Well, yes, but I mean, they would still have to come and ask the the board we use Sherwood Park on such and such a date, which, you know, is not a bad idea, considering we don't want five different.
Yep, I understand. Right.
Um, but they but they would know, for example, the Agricultural Commission would know in advance that they're not going to be charged.
Okay, I I just wanted to raise that question, but thank you for the clarification.
Mrs. Bogart?
So then that should that be addressed on the actual application when it says this form must be accompanied by a non-refundable fee of $50?
It will be. That will be changed as soon as the board votes to change it.
Okay.
Okay. Any other, is there been a motion?
Yes, I made the motion. I believe Mr. Belbin seconded.
Seconded.
Any further discussion?
Are you still including the Carver Residence section of that, or did you did you take that out?
I'm sorry?
The Carver Residence? Did you take that part out of your motion?
I did take it out because of the example that Jen just gave. It occurred to me. We don't want Jen and her family having their birthday party there.
Oh, I'm I'm gonna go get the girls. They're not gonna be happy with you.
You can come apply for a fee waiver.
All right. There we go. So, yes, and I just felt it was a really broad category. Most of the the groups, I think, we're really aiming to protect here are these municipal commissions and boards and nonprofits, so.
Yep, I agree.
So there's been a motion and a second. All in favor?
Robert Belbin says aye.
Jim Bogart, aye.
Mr. Townsend?
Mr. Townsend says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Barry Hewen says aye. Okay, thanks, everybody. Okay. Moving right along. Oh, okay, so this is my little stick here. I I did forward to this is Weston, the documents that I think hopefully you all got. So two years ago, I applied to the U.S. Board on Geographic Names to name a a brook that one of our conservation commissioners years ago had, he he didn't discover the brook per se, but he discovered the source. And it's up on the coal property. And um after he made that discovery, it's a long story, but this this document here, the Domestic Name Name Report, it gives a long history there at the bottom, as you can see, on why I felt that that brook should be named for him. He was a very passionate conservationist, a brilliant photographer, and a member of our Conservation Commission. And he passed away in 2010. And so in 2018, it took me long enough, I applied for that, and got this wonderful letter from, bet you never knew this board existed, the U.S. Board on Geographic Names, who approved the name. And so John Woods and I, he's the DPW superintendent, designed a sign, which is this picture. It looks red here, but it's not. It's gonna be brown. And the sign company, well, let's just say there were some errors in the sign, and it's taken us two years, but now we have a good sign. And so I, filing on behalf of the town, I request the determination of applicability, since the sign, we're proposing to install it right next to the brook. Obviously, it's a commemorative sign, and we also have a bench. And so what I'm hoping is that the board will give the give your blessing to my going ahead and filing this with the Conservation Commission. And hopefully, we can get that sign installed before the ground freezes.
I'll make a motion. We approve it?
A second, Matt.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Bogart?
Does the name Grumpy's have an apostrophe in it or not?
Good question. So I I have a long string of emails with this U.S. Board of Geographic Names about that, just that question. And what they told me was that very specifically, they do not allow apostrophes in names, because nobody can own something like a river or a mountain, or it belongs to everyone. So I said, okay, but we need to keep the the S there, because we don't want to call Grumpy Brook, you know? So that so that is correct. It is correct without an apostrophe for their specific reason.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that's the brook, you're coming down the coal property on the road, that's that first brook we're coming to right then and there. It's um will it be attached to the actual bridge structure that's there, or will it be a separate posting? Because my fear is that it could be stolen or something like that. I mean, how will it be attached and?
Okay, so I'm reading off of this IDA. It's going to, it's, there are gonna be two posts for the for the sign and two posts for the bench. And they will be cemented into the ground. The DPW is really good at that, so it's it's not going to be on the bridge per se, if the bridge, you know, God forbid, something happened to the bridge. We don't want the signs to fall down. I understand your concern. I think it's gonna be pretty hard to steal the signs the way they're proposing to install it. They're using a post hole digger, and they're gonna cement them in. And it's fairly deep. I think they go down maybe four feet. These these posts.
The other thing is, where will the bench be? Because um
Well, that's it's, that's to be determined, actually. I I'm glad you brought that up, because John and I are gonna go walk out there hopefully tomorrow, possibly next week, to just see which side should it be on, which side of the brook, and which side of the bridge as well.
Right.
So it has to be an appropriate spot.
Right, because it it is kind of, it's hilly that area there, because it does go down the way the topography of the road goes and whatnot. And plus, it'd be careful of snow and a plow out there. It's gotta be, like I said, I I don't know. I mean, either put it, my, just my opinion is, put it toward the front of the area as you drive in, where there's a post already with a information board there.
Yeah, I'm thinking of putting it closer to the brook, but there would be no question, this sign would be clearly visible. They're not plowing it.
Okay, I just, like I said, yeah.
Yeah.
Making sure. I've been there many, many times, and I'll be going in a couple of days, so.
No, and and I I appreciate you bringing that, because um some of the DPW crew was out there the other day, and and they will be the ones installing it, so they'll know, you know, what if what if all of that, it'll be very visible.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, motion's been made and seconded on to allow this filing to go through on the town's behalf. All in favor? Mrs. Bogart?
Robert Belbin says aye.
Jim Bogart, aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Jim Hoffman, aye.
Mr. Townsend?
Mark Townsend says aye.
And Barry Hewen. Okay, thank you very much. County Minister, updates? Mr. LaFond?
Yes, I will try and make this as quickly as quick as possible. CARES Act update. We have submitted now approximately in excess of eight, approximately $900,000 in requests. In fact, we had this one going this week for approximately $300,000, and a good chunk of that was for PPE for the school, for staff, for extra staff, for cleaning. There's also the unemployment component. As you know, you received our first check from Mr. O'Brien two weeks ago. This will put us a little over half of what our allocation is of $1.7 million. The that piece, unless the deadline is extended, is intended to be for any needs that we may have through the end of the year. So we are at the point, beyond the point now that we told the county we'd be at by the end of October. So one of the couple particular things is, I think I've already put in the request to Mr. O'Brien, asking what his thoughts are on repairing our roofs over at Sherwood Park for outdoor activities, because we can't, it's hard to get tents. And that, I think, would no have a permanent location to have outdoor events for seniors and others. We are also, we'll be submitting a request soon for reimbursement for expanding and enhancing the web capability at the town library. As some of you may know, there's a specific earmark for councils on aging libraries and veterans. So it's not that we have to have a COA, the COA facility, but for for senior activities. So so we're moving towards trying to round out utilization of that $107,000. So any questions on that at the moment? Or shall we continue?
So that is one question I'm gonna ask Tom O'Brien, whether we can repair the Sherwood Park roof.
I've already posed the question, but Tom's been a little busy the last week or so, so. Great. The next issue, and and I would, I'm sorry, Sarah.
Just one quick question is, and you use that money to upgrade the internet capabilities of town hall for these Zoom meetings, so you're not using your own phone for this? And the internet really isn't the best in town hall. Is that a possibility, that we need to be able to do this?
I will certainly ask those questions. Those are very valid concerns here.
Mr. Hoffman?
Um, Rick, I had asked earlier, I think, a couple of meetings ago, about outfitting the high school. Has that ever been discussed? For maybe having some public meetings, the better capability for Zoom.
I have discussed it with the IT Director, Steve Mahoney, but I have to confess, I have not really pursued that to any great extent just yet.
Okay.
The next issue is the Regional Refuge District Update, and I'll say a piece and certainly defer to Mr. Belbin. One of the the major question that has come up and came up at the last board meeting, which I attended, and Mr., and Mr. Hoffman attended, um, was, you know, allowing Wareham, um, on behalf of the district, or have, or have a lease from the district to operate the transfer station. Um, I actually met, had a meeting this past week with town, with town council and Wareham and the district, um, they did, um, I'm sorry, the attorney for the district, um, to ensure that the, the agreement, uh, there could be a contract agreement to do that with Wareham. That was one of the key issues at the last meeting. So the intent is, there is a, a board meeting on next Monday morning. Um, and hopefully there'll be, uh, direction from the board and perhaps a vote, because Bob had put on, has on the agenda rescinding the prior vote, um, to close the transfer station. Uh, but I, I'm hoping that, um, that the board, and I'm, I'm obviously, Bob will be, um, pursuing this, um, will ultimately agree to have an agreement with Wareham, uh, that would also allow Carver to participate in using the transfer station. So hopefully, um, and skipping ahead a little bit, I believe Mr. Townsend had asked for these things on, uh, for an update. I, I don't have a particular document regarding the negotiation with Plymouth. And to the extent that we may indeed, um, have the capability to participate in the transfer station, um, January 1, um, we have, the, there isn't a communicate, I would recommend, we don't actually have a communication yet until we know after Monday whether or not that's even going to be necessary.
The rea, so the, just quickly, the reason I asked for that to be put on, um, I, I believe at one point, I don't remember how long ago it was, Mr. Monoski had come to us at one of our meetings when the, we were discussing closing the transportation and, and informed us that he'd worked out a, a, an agreement with Plymouth, that Carver residents could use the Plymouth transfer station. And obviously, I'd rather, I'd rather have us have an agreement with Wareham, but in the extent, in the, in the event that we have nothing, I thought that would be something that we could revisit just to see where that, where that stands, that's all. So you may, you may want to discuss it with Mr. Monoski at some point, because I believe he had that totally negotiated.
Okay, and obviously after Monday, uh, Mark will have a, a very good idea hopefully as to what, what's necessary, so hopefully, hopefully your concerns will be alleviated after, after Monday, and I don't know, Bob, would you agree with that?
Yeah, just a couple of things, um, the first thing about Plymouth, uh, supposed agreement or whatever, um, maybe do an email communication search through, um, Mr. Mahoney, to see if there's anything in writing on this. Um, like I said, we just heard verbal, we didn't see anything in writing, uh, with it, so that would be my first choice to go ahead and take a look to see if there's anything in writing, just report back to us if there is anything.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, I don't know that you need to contact anybody, it should be right there.
Right, so. That's, that's the first thing. The second thing is, um, I'm doing the postings for the meetings for the district, so, um, what I got was, yes, uh, it is on the agenda to, um, revote or have another vote on closing the Route 28 facility for the district. As I said at town meeting, I'll do what town meeting says. There is also a discussion and vote for Wareham's request to operate and/or lease the Route 28 transfer station. Uh, and also to, um, possibly get a contract from 2021 to 2025 agreement with CMAS for either the district or, um, if Wareham goes ahead and runs it, that there is an agreement put out there. But these things are being done, uh, in the background. Uh, I'm not privy to any of these, because this is Wareham's deal, not Carver's. Um, Wareham's working toward that. I did get an email, um, from the district rep that said, um, at, uh, Wareham Town Council is working with the district town council on an agreement for one year. That was the email that I just received, uh, yesterday. Um, I read it last night, I was posting the agenda. So, I mean, Wareham's moving forward. Uh, my fingers across that, uh, this will get passed, um. It needs a majority vote of the board, uh, of the district, so that means all three of Wareham reps need to approve it, and we need to have these two from Carver to approve it, or if one from Wareham, need five members to approve it. Um, and we still don't know if, um, Marion's going to go forward, and they're actually going to vote on this too. Because they want assurances at the last meeting about, um, what Wareham was going to do with the vote that we just took at our town meeting. So there is some, um, clashing of, uh, heads in the district between Marion and, uh, the other members of the board or whatnot, and I don't know, I don't know what our other board members are going to do. So it's, like I said, I know my feeling, where I'm looking at, I want to look out for the best interest of the town, Carver and our residents, and, uh, that's what we're going to do. Thank you.
And moving along, the update on, uh, town website, um, including descriptions, um, of, of the role, the mission of boards and committees, or the job description, so to speak. Uh, Jen had requested this, and, um, you know, Elaine, to her credit, has created, descriptions for about a dozen different boards and committees. Um, and if it's not already done, she proposed, well, she, what she will be doing is putting it on the website.
Uh-oh.
Openings and to board a committee that board, so. So that's moving along well, and I, again, thank Elaine for, for taking that under her wing. And the last thing, and Elaine, can you hear me? Oh, Elaine?
Yes.
Okay, the update on Town Hall Children's Project, um, I will defer to you on that too. Um, and I didn't tell Elaine I would in advance, so, um, so thank you for being so willing.
Yeah, uh, the update on that is just that, uh, we have toys on order and that we're just coordinating now how to, how this will be facilitated going forward.
Right, and this would be in conjunction probably with the library too, so we're all working together on, on this.
That's great. Thank you, then.
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just think, I think there was one thing, the, uh, the communication, Rick, with, uh, our residents about the transfer station and where that stands.
Well, yes. Yes, I think, you know, after Monday, probably we'll have a very good idea as to whether or not we have to notify people of the imminent closing, because I know that was a concern that's been raised, that people have adequate time to find alternate.
Hang on, hang on, Mr. Bellbin, let's get back first.
So, again, we're, we're, we'll no longer, stay tuned.
Okay, I just, I just would, and I know everybody knows this, but obviously, the longer we wait, the less time people have to make their arrangements that they have to resolve.
And if I, if I could, um, Mr. Lefan, we lost half of what you said there because of your internet access.
Oh. Um, can, can you hear me right now? I'm sorry.
Yes, you just froze for quite a period of time.
Okay, all I, um, wanted to, uh, comment on that point is that hopefully after Monday, we will know whether or not there's, we need to be notifying residents, of the imminent closure. Hopefully, it won't even be an issue after, um, Monday.
But we still need to notify residents that of all the change, there's still going to be substantial changes down there, the price is going to substantially change. And so I just think we should notify them one way or another, because there's going to be changes no matter what happens. And we may want to wait to, so we have a little more guidance, but it's going to be a lot of changes no matter what.
I have, I'm going to be making, I'll be making a motion, um, with the board at our meeting, our regular meeting that we have, to, uh, put postings, because we won't know anything until next Monday. But I'm going to be in a motion that we do have signage that the district pays for, uh, to be placed at the transfer station, so people know what's going on. Uh, and know after, um, like I said, Monday, hopefully as quick as possible, we can get a sign up there and let them know what's going on, because, um, if, if there's an agreement that Wareham's going to go ahead and take over this, and it's Wareham residents only, because once we get that portion done with the district, and it's up to Rick to negotiate with Wareham, uh, an agreement that Carver can utilize the transfer station, and that's, like I said, Rick, it's all you.
No, thank.
To, to go ahead and do that, all right? So, um, I just want to make sure that there, there are things going on and, and, like I said, the district hopefully will come back and do what's right.
And to your point quickly, Bob, um, what had been discussed this week is that, um, it was actually Wareham's town council, Mr. Rich Bowden, some of you may remember him from years past. He actually suggested that whatever lease, um, that is by whatever title that Wareham has would specifically include Carver's ability to participate. So I think that's something that, uh, that should be pursued, Bob, by, by you on the board.
Thank you very much.
Passing the buck, passing the buck right back to you.
All right, I'll work on it.
Okay.
Hey, Rick, good, one, one quick question.
Yes.
On the last district meeting, I know the district had talked about sending that announcement out as well. So just to make Mr. Townsend feel a little more comfortable, the district's well aware of that as all. They want to send something out, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know, Bob, you might have loved to, by the time when they had discussed that, that's what the district, the director had said. So everyone's aware of the communication ASAP.
And just to, just to be aware is that, um, who do my schedule at work? If I have, I was only available for the first like 40 minutes because of my break schedule. I did leave the meeting, but next day I did get an update from our, um, executive, Jeff, uh, of what went on and what transpired, so, um, hazards of working in a hospital.
And can I have one moment, something that is, uh, within 48 hours, Sarah? Yeah, just in light of the governor's, uh, recent, uh, directive with regard to meetings and gatherings, what we are doing here at town hall is we're doing, um, we're looking for input from all departments in town hall as to, to what extent people can work remotely. And, um, Steve Mahoney, our IT director, has, um, is, is helping with that. And through the CARES Act funding, we do have, um, a number of, um, laptops that have been, um, received, uh, that will help people do that to the extent that we can. In addition, we are going to have somebody in the lobby, um, downstairs who is, um, monitoring the, the foot traffic that comes in the building to make sure, um, that we don't, um, unduly crowd, crowd our hallways, which again, I suspect will not be an issue, but also to make sure people are wearing masks. And what I, um, have, uh, what we're requiring people to do here, employees, is to wear their masks at all times, um, unless they're in their own personal workspace. So those of you who, uh, members of the board, I know who come into the selectmen's office, um, I think all of you wear masks, but from, uh, but employees need to wear masks too, like I said, unless they're in their own personal office space. So those are some ways we're, we're responding to that, uh, in the short term, and this is going to be obviously a fluid situation. And that's all I have, and I'm sorry for taking so much time.
That's all right, Mr. Lefan, we actually took more to the time limit, so that's fine. Um, request for one day special. Moonrise Audio Visual LLC DBA as Moonrise Cinema.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
You know, I, first time when we did the, the first round of, of paperwork, so, uh, just here to follow up. We're hoping to continue into November and December. Um, and we would like to add, uh, beer and wine for a couple of specific dates, uh, which that was amended from, uh, yesterday, I sent an updated list of dates, um, which is, uh, only four dates, two public and two private events, uh, that we're working on. And, um, if other events come up, my plan would be to come to the next meeting on the 17th and, and talk about any further, further things that add to our schedule before the end of the year.
Okay, great, thank you. Um.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Um, made and seconded, any discussion?
Just one quick, is that, um, with the governor's order on alcoholic beverages, um, being served or whatnot, uh, you are familiar with this, did they get a copy of this yet, you know?
Um, specifically, what are you referring to? I mean, I've, I've a bunch about it.
Yeah, no, there's a new, there's a new order out there, uh, it's got to end by 9:30, uh, but because you're a drive-in and a vehicle, um, my opinion is that possibly stop serving an hour before. I don't know how you're going to handle, how you're going to handle it, I know how other, um, we there does do it, so.
Well, our plan is to close by nine o'clock on any of those dates. Uh, and so people have that, you know, our staff basically has a half hour to close out and get out of there by 9:30, and guests have an hour to get home after closing, uh, before the 10 o'clock hard curfew. Um, and so if, you know, closing at nine o'clock, typically our last call would be at 8:30, 8:45, something like that, if that's.
I wonder if it would be appropriate if we amend the motion to just include that, you know, applicable somehow that they comply with all, any future orders, because who knows what might change between now and, and some of these dates with COVID.
I'll take that as a friendly motion.
And on his application, it does say, um, or as permitted by state curfew, so.
Okay.
Okay, no, that's fine, I think that covers it.
Yeah, I just think we should, we should mention that just because who knows what could change between now and some of these dates, so.
Right.
Of course.
Okay, we're voting on the amended motion. Is there a motion? That was the motion, a second, to the amendment?
Second.
Okay, motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Robert Bellbin says aye.
Jen Bogart, aye.
Mr. Townsend says aye.
Jim Hoffman, aye.
Terry Hewen says aye. Thank you, Mr. Lefan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck.
We have a, we have a second for the entertainment license as well, is that?
I'll make a motion, we approve the, uh, entertainment license.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion?
I would just suggest that we include the line, somehow, some wording that we, again, that it's pursuant to any, any issues that may come forward with COVID, some, some to, subject to government, uh, guidelines or something like that.
State guidelines, yes.
I'll take that as a friendly motion.
Okay.
The change.
And a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
So one quick question.
Yes.
Stalata, how's it, how's it been going? How's the turnout been? What do you expect it?
It's, it's been great, we actually had a fantastic month of October, uh, which is why we plan to continue to be here. I mean, November into December, we're looking at, obviously, the weather is, is getting colder and the ability to, you know, be outside is, is somewhat limited by that, but, you know, we're, we're hopeful that, um, that we can get some more stuff going this month and then maybe into the spring as well, when the, when the weather turns around again, so. Um, yeah, we, we hope to be in the Carver community for, for a long time if, if it all works out.
That's, that's good to hear, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me? Okay, there's a motion and a second, further discussion? All those in favor?
Robert Bellbin says aye.
Jen Bogart, aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Terry Hewen says aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next meeting is November 17th, 2020. Are there any select board community announcements from anyone?
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would just, uh, congratulate the town clerk, her office, and all our election workers, I thought things went very, very well, uh, under difficult circumstances, uh, and I, I was pleased to see so many people come out to vote, because I think it's the first time in a long time I've stood in line. Uh, so I was very happy about that, so just thank you to, to all those election workers.
I agree, and, and I actually voted, um, early in person, and it was the same, it was as smooth as I've ever had experienced it, and the, the workers were terrific and very professional. Anyone else? Nope. Um, select board notes, Mr. Bellbin.
All right, so I'll try to be quick on this, uh, the creation of a s- select board subcommittee on town by law changes, we have our town bylaws. Here, um, we talked about finance committee, which is in this bylaw here. We should review our bylaws every few years, um, and my thinking is we're doing it with the zoning right now. And we should do it also with our town bylaws, to look at each individual one to see, hey, should we change this yes or no? Okay, what do we want to change? My feeling is this, the board of select. My feeling is the, the board of selectmen should be the ones that are driving this. So my position is at the next meeting that we create a subcommittee where two members of the board of selectmen, and then we seek out other people that are interested in it, possibly one from each committee, whatnot, be part of the subcommittee to go through each individual bylaw that we have here. And anybody that's interested, they come forward. And if they want to see changes in it, we make it and go chapter by chapter by chapter. That way, everyone knows what's going on. And if we have changes, we bring it back and we can fix the little things here and there that need to be adjusted. That's the first one. Second one is a postmortem town meeting discussion. The select board, moderator, town clerk, workers, attendees, create a plan for future town meetings. I did this for a reason. Mass Moderators Association actually puts forth after town meeting. It's a critique of town meeting process. And I did have email discussions back and forth with the moderator on this. And he said he was going to have a postmortem. I didn't say anything about the board of selectmen would be part of this. I think this is part of the process of a postmortem is to go ahead and do this. So my feeling is, is that the board of selectmen should be part of that process. And in Mass Moderators Association, it does say that selectmen are part of the process. So I want to make sure.
Selectmen can be part of the process, but I believe it's up to the town moderator.
Well, if, and you know, any, what it says is that some towns hold a meeting after the conclusion of the annual town meeting to critique the town meeting process. It may be convened by the moderator, selectmen, a group of town meeting members, or a non-government body such as a league of women voters, and cover such topics. So this is a suggestion from Mass Moderator. It doesn't have to be the moderator that's the one that's guiding this.
No, I'm speaking as a select board member and as the chair. I, I, we really shouldn't be debating this, but my, my only response to you is that I believe, since it's the moderator's meeting, it's up to him to decide who comes to his postmortem. That's just my feeling.
Okay, well, in order to get other people's opinions, because you have to critique it. And you're critiquing it on a number of different issues. So, I mean, what I put down for notes here and just a few of them is, I want this process to happen to be open to the public, participate and offer suggestions for changes. A meeting vote on Article 5. How can we have more voters than actual voters? That's just a comment. Okay, why did, why did a town official vote twice? Was there enough people to run it? Was there enough planning? Town bylaw states Roberts Rules of Orders to be used, but the moderator stated that a meeting time and Roberts Rules of Order. All right, so was the lighting effective? Was there adequate safety precautions? Residents' names that were checked off that really weren't there? Okay, so there are a number of different issues. All right, that happened during town meeting. And unless we bring these issues out and discuss them openly, then we can turn around and make changes to make sure it doesn't happen again. All right, town meeting has to be done fairly and equitably. We need to make sure it's run effectively. And this is the part of it, is that we all have to sit there and have discussions. But they should be in open form, not just a closed-door meeting, where only a certain amount of people have only a certain amount of information going forward. So at the next meeting, I would like the board of selectmen to turn around and schedule a meeting. All right, to have a postmortem on our meeting, where these issues can be discussed with all people and say, hey, it's not, it's a critique, okay? It's a way to make it better in the future. There were issues, yes. How can we fix it so we don't have those issues in the future? Okay, so, and if it means changing the town bylaws, well, we have a, we create a town bylaw committee at our next meeting, go through the bylaws, then we have an opportunity to change them then. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belbin. Mr. Townsend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, a standard posting practice for board and committee openings. This occurred to me, we've had a number of meetings where we were appointing people to different boards. And there's been questions about, was it on the website? Did we, did someone see it? Did someone not see it? So I just think we should come up with some standard guidelines for when a, a board or committee opening is out there. I think, you know, you know, obviously, we can discuss it. Maybe it's on the website for so long, maybe we send it to the newspaper, maybe we do, you know, social media. I don't, you know, various different things. I just think we should come up with some, some standards where every time there's an opening, we, we, we do these things. So, so there's no question about whether it was out there and available to the general public, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. I appreciate that. There being nothing further on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jim Bogart, aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Mr. Belbin.
Robert Belbin says aye.
Darren Hewen says aye. We adjourned. Thank you all.
Have a good day, everybody.
Have a good day.